Good evening. It is 5:30 on December 14th. We have a full dais. I am calling this meeting to order. We will be going into executive session to talk about two items, item 2A and 2B. Item 2A reads as follows. City Council shall convene and to close executive session for a legal briefing by the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 regarding Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Article 1.15, the Code of Ethics. And item 2B, City Council shall convene and to close executive session for a legal briefing by the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Resolution Number R 2021-119 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary contractual documentation regarding collection, transportation, treatment of material related to the West Side wastewater collection system. It is 5:31 and we are in executive session. Just want to remind everyone that we will start our regular session at 6:30 regardless of how long or how short the executive session is. We will be starting regular session at 6:30. So, we are in executive session. Colin, are we good? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30 and we are out of executive session. We're on item number three, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for the, I've lost my pen, posted for consideration and closed executive session and there will be no actions taken as a result of that. So, we are on item four and we are calling the regular meeting to order. And I apologize because I was in executive session, I usually get a chance to meet the students that are saying the pledge. So, is Ella Griesenbeck and Isabella Melita Conrady, are y'all here? Yay, come forward, come forward. They are with the Bastrop Middle School Student Council. Please come up to the front. We want to see your shining faces. Yay, there they are. And ladies and gentlemen, if you will stand, these two wonderful young ladies will lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a round of applause. And if you would please remain standing, our invocation tonight will be by Dr. Raymond Edge, who is the senior pastor with First Baptist Church. Dr. Edge?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, we come to you tonight. Lord, we thank you for how that you have blessed us and we thank you for how that you have blessed Bastrop, Texas. And Lord, you have guided us to pray for our leaders and we lift up each one of them tonight. We ask Heavenly Father for your wisdom and guidance upon them as they make decisions that's best for all of us. And we pray Heavenly Father that in that guidance that we see your hand at work in all that we do. Heavenly Father, we ask your continued blessing upon this city and this county. And Heavenly Father, especially at this time, we thank you. Heavenly Father, that you sent Christ Jesus Christmas time, Lord God, that we honor and we celebrate him for he's the reason. So, guide us tonight in all that you do, we do. Use us for your glory in the precious name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Edge. You may all take a seat. All right, council, we're going on to the mayor's report in light of the fact that we have a seven-page agenda tonight. We're going to be getting a super abbreviated mayor's report. We're going to start with Councilmember Crouch is a Christmas baby. He will be having his birthday on Christmas Day and if you would join us with a round of applause, we'd like to recognize him. And December's a big birthday month for council. Councilmember Rogers is celebrating her birthday on December 28th. Let's have a round of applause for her. Okay, and in the Christmas spirit, council and the assistant city managers and the city attorney and city secretary, the poinsettias are from my husband and I, so Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday from the Schraders. And for the general public, I got a call this afternoon and I'm sure there'll be some Facebook posts, but the State Park will be burning brush tomorrow. And I know how we all feel when we see smoke on the horizon, so I'm giving you the heads up. The State Park is doing a controlled burn tomorrow. I also wanted to mention the fabulous lighted Christmas parade that we had on Saturday. They are estimating that we had about 12,000 people in attendance. There were about, people keep trying to say 120. It was like 104 and some of the numbers didn't get their lights going, so, but it was over 100. It took an hour and a half for it to go by and it was awesome. And I think everyone had a really good time. Colin, we're not going to zoom in on anything. I'm going to note that I was really pleased to be a part of the city recreation open house. They did a two-hour open house and got 13 new members in two hours. And then I'm told a couple other people that couldn't stick around joined later. And I also want to call attention to the fact that we had the ribbon cutting at 921 Main. That was a really fun thing to do. And I always enjoy visiting with, being interviewed by the ninth graders at Circa. So, you can see some of the other stuff that I was doing. The next page will show the planned events. I did, I think, almost all of those things and it's December 14th and here we are. And the upcoming events, I will bring to note that if you haven't already enjoyed the River of Lights, make, try to plan to go down there. They're really cool. It's a fun thing to do with your family. And the Chamber Lunch is January 5th and Farm Street Opry will be on January 6th. That's my mayor's report. And we are moving on to item 7B. Councilmember Rogers, do you have anything to share with us tonight?
No ma'am. I'm all free.
All right. We'll let the birthday people go first. Councilmember Crouch, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that this was the first year I got to ride on the float and it's different from the float perspective to see how many people were actually on there and I got to stand next to the Grinch, which was kind of awesome, too. But anyway, it has to be a huge amount of work for everybody to put that on and for everybody to do all that. And then to see the, really the face of the kids as you're going through is just incredible. So, I'm glad we get to do that every year and I'm glad I got to see it from a different perspective rather than sitting in a lawn chair on the side. So, it was really good and I hope that everybody here got to see it and it was good from a different perspective this year.
It was great parade weather. We weren't completely freezing and it wasn't hot. Thank you very, is that, that was it? Thank you very much, Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to say the same about what Councilmember Crouch said. I also saw the parade from a different perspective because my motorcycle stopped on and I had to walk half the parade. But I did make it through the parade. But with that, I want everybody to say during the Christmas season, holiday season, wish everyone happy holidays and keep these people in your thoughts and minds, the people who went through the hurricanes. It's just horrific thing to happen just before Christmas. So, everybody, keep those people in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Councilmember Jackson?
I just did hold to what Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Crouch said. Just two quick announcements because I know we are short for time tonight. I enjoyed going to the open house for the Bastrop County African-American Cultural Center, which is at the Kerr Center and the second story and it'll be open, we'll have it open soon for people to come by and see the exhibit that was moved from the Bastrop Historical Society Museum now is at the Kerr Center on the second floor. So, there'll be more information out about that. And I wanted to invite you all to joyous Christmas this weekend at the Performing Arts Center, the Jerry Fay Wilhelm, since I'm Jerry's kid, Performing Arts Center. It's going to be Friday and Saturday and come early because I'm doing a solo early. So, hopefully you'll get a chance to come and enjoy that. And to all of you, happy, happy holidays.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Madam Mayor, to avoid repetition and to achieve some brevity, I have no comment.
All right. We're moving on to item 7C, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things. Thanks for all the positive comments.
Thank you all for all the positive comments about the lighted Christmas parade. It did take a really big effort from the city staff. Thanks for acknowledging that. I think every city department was represented. I think it was well coordinated. Thank you Candace. Thank you Kathy. I don't think Kathy's in the room. Police, Fire, Public Works, Bastrop Power and Light, and again, just a whole bunch of city employees who volunteered and really is a labor of love and we enjoy it. Council, another quick announcement, you know that we applied for a grant with the St. David's Foundation to provide funding for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan update and we received word this morning that St. David's approved that grant. They will next submit to us a specific contract that I'll need to bring to council in January, so look forward to that. And Colin, we have a couple of slides. Our next city council meeting is January 11th. I for one could get used to once a month council meetings, but it does cause the meetings to be a little longer. And we do have quite a few things scheduled for January 11th. Our bond sale to fund street improvements in town is scheduled for January the 11th. I think most of the items on that list you have seen before and know about. Council, thank you for the workshop we had yesterday. I thought that discussion was really productive as we worked to create specific policy direction to the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. We are on track to bring something for you to look at at your January 25th meeting. That's when that will be scheduled. It's not scheduled for January 11th as the slide indicates. On January 11th, though, we are bringing to you a contract with students at Texas A&amp;M to help us with our GIS work that we talked about a bit last May. Fabiola will be bringing that item to you. And Fabiola is also working on another construction management contract that will help us keep up with the, all of the construction workload that's going on out there for which the city is responsible. And we are ready to get engineering work finished for the next phase of work at our wastewater treatment plant, specifically for the transfer list station that handles existing loads and our force main project. And the other project we've been talking about for a while is an update to our pavement condition index and Mr. Hancock will have a contract for us to review on the 11th. And we have a winner to announce for our Great City Decorating Contest. This year's city participant that won the most votes is the Bastrop Police Department. So, thank you guys for participating in that. Over, we had over 100 votes, I understand, and a good time at the library open house held on Saturday. I think we have one more slide that shows some of the other entries. Thank you, council.
Thank you, city manager. The departments, it's a fierce petition. I'm just telling you, they were hiding their decorations from each other and they enjoyed decorating those gingerbread houses. All right, council, we're moving on to item 7D, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing December as Fair Housing Month in the city of Bastrop. Whereas Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 is amended prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. Whereas the National Fair Housing Law during the month of November provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal opportunity housing can be accomplished with help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim December as Fair Housing Month in the city of Bastrop and do hereby urge all citizens of the locality to become aware of and support fair housing law. So, yes, I said November and then declared December, so we'll get that straightened out. I have signed that. Council, I know that we all agree that we need to have fair housing within the city of Bastrop. And one of the other reasons that we do that declaration is it makes us as a city eligible for certain grants that require that we recognize and acknowledge that. So, that's one of the reasons that we were doing that. Moving on, there are no work session briefings. Moving on to staff reports. 9A, received presentation of the strategic planning calendar for fiscal year 2223. Ms. Waldron will be presenting that. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening. Do you have, you have the?
I do not.
All right, I'll be brief and just kind of recognize that we do put together a strategic planning calendar and it's very detailed and it covers certain areas that we want to make sure that we address during the process, preparation, adoption, and implementation. I do put a note on there that the calendar is based on not exceeding the three and a half percent because the dates change very dramatically if that were to be the case. The calendar really is not, as far as the items that are on it, is not different than last year's calendar. All we've done is update the dates and so we've asterisked those dates that are council meetings so that you know when those dates are effective. Some dates to highlight, May 10th, the city council will receive a capital plan and fiscal forecast. May 12th is when we plan to have our planning workshop with council. The adoption will be September 20th. And implementation, if you have any questions for me, I can address those.
Council, I keep a copy of this printed out in my office. It doesn't have all of the council meetings, but it has some key council meetings and I know that the city secretary, if you guys approve this tonight, she'll be adding those workshops to your calendar for the future. Those August workshops can sneak up on you, so we try to make sure you get as much visibility as you can for some of those key meetings. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Waldron? Happy to entertain a motion? Oh, you don't even need a motion, do you? Okay. We're happy that you've presented. Let's move on to the next one. Item 9B, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for period ending September 30th, 2021.
Okay, well, it was last fiscal year and we've already moved on, but let's talk about it again. We actually, very, very strong, 17% general fund exceeded budget, sales tax was 18% over budget, and development fees were 1.3 million over budget. Revenues, hot funds actually caught up with themselves and only ended up being 10% behind budget by the time we got to the end of the fiscal year. So, that was really-
That's amazing.
-a very great, huge turnaround. And all the expenses were within budget. That's all I have to report on September.
Any questions for Ms. Waldron on September? All right, let's move on to 9C, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for period ending October 31st, 2021. Ms. Waldron?
All right, I continue with the same story. General fund exceeded forecast 25%. Sales tax is 9% over forecast, still coming in very strong. Development fees is already 16% over our total budget. Hot fund, it ended very strong the last two months and it has started the first two months very strong. So, we're already over my forecast. I put in my staff report that we will be watching that and we will be revisiting that to see what we need to do to adjust, you know, any contracts that are tied to that estimate. Other funds below forecast, these are just interest issues. Impact fees was running temporarily below, but I've already looked at our November report and we're already above forecast again. So, all expenses were within forecast.
Excellent. Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron on the first month? Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted to say for both reports, great job. You know, I always love to see them positives, but I'm always confident in the news you're bringing, that you're very thorough and you've done wonderful.
Thank you.
Councilmember Crouch?
It's really nice to see reports with a whole lot of green in them and a very small piece of red, so that's always a really good, really good deal.
I think we're all encouraged by seeing the hot funds being up and I think it's worth acknowledging that that doesn't just accidentally happen and I appreciate the folks who have worked so hard to make sure that we still have people wanting to come to town and stay and be with us and our friends out at the Hyatt and all of the hotels. All right, Ms. Waldron, anything else?
That's it.
All right. Council, we're moving to the top of page three and that is citizen comments. I have one person signed up to speak. It is Roger Henderson. Mr. Henderson, if you'd please state your name and address and you will have three minutes.
Roger Henderson, 706 MLK Drive. My comment is, I'm not on litigation that I don't want to speak about, but the city, I would like to know who paid for the lawyers for those defendants. Is it the city money or is it their own personal money, taxpayer money to defend them? I'd like to have that if that's open for discussion also about police abuses against black citizens in Bastrop. I'd like to address that issue. Don't have to address my issue, I could go with two other issues. One day in 2019, a phone call was made to city police, okay? I was a witness because I made several calls about an individual trying to kick my nephew's during, okay? I was on the scene, it took the police about 30 minutes to arrive. When they did arrive, they apprehended the suspect and I watched him personally with other witnesses search that black defendant, okay? I watched him search him aggressively, okay? Well, when that particular person got to the county jail, after we watched him search him, he had no drugs on him during that search, but when he got to the jail, he had drugs on him. That's one issue. Another issue was a county defendant, a black defendant out here behind Home Depot in that housing division. Same thing, police searched his bag. When he got to jail later, he had drugs on him, okay? So, this ain't just a situation with me, it's an ongoing situation, okay? That hadn't been reported, okay? It's time for the citizens to step up and deal with this race issue in Bastrop, okay? Something has to be done about it, okay? I can look out. I don't see many people in here that represents the community as a whole, okay? So, that seems to be a problem and it needs to be addressed, okay? The lawyers that y'all have hired, I went to the municipal court one day, okay? I watched many Hispanic families come in that place, okay? There wasn't a county attorney there. He was supposed to be there, his office was supposed to be there, but they wasn't, okay? I watched a court coordinator charge those families without attorneys there on neither side, charged them fees, that's illegal in the state of Texas. I went to the district attorney's office, okay, to address the issue. He said he had nothing to do with municipal. Something has to be done about that. The court coordinator over in that municipal court, he has no license to practice law, nor can he piggyback his license off. Something has to stop, something has to be corrected, okay? I'm not going to even talk about my issue. I handle my issue by myself. Something has to be done about it. Have a great day, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Council, in light of the fact that the consent agenda is really, really long, I'm going to save the consent agenda for later so that we can get on to other business. We will come back and do it, I promise. We are moving to items for individual consideration and we've got someone in the audience with us, so I need to call item 12M. We're going to do 12M and 12N first. I think they will be fairly fast. Item 12M is on page six. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-20 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, designating and recognizing an area, that being approximately 546 acres located at 1240 Lover's Lane in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, as a media production development zone and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date and move to include on the January 11th consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Yes. So, some background on this applicant. Council approved a development agreement with Bastrop Colorado Bend LLC. We know it also as 552 and there's a couple more names, but this is the official applicant name. They have submitted an application to the city, which has been forwarded to the Texas Film Commission that is requesting the exemption under a media production development zone. And so, that would allow them to have sale and use tax exemptions for certain production costs. I was more thorough in the staff report, I'm just kind of hitting the highlights. So, this particular option for them was created by the comptroller's office, the governor's office, and it's managed by the Texas Film Commission in 2009. It requires the city to establish the zone and it also requires the city to nominate the location within the zone, which is why there's two items. And we would also have to complete an application that we would also submit to the Texas Film Commission on the applicant's behalf. And so, that's kind of the history behind the request. I do have representatives from the Texas Film Commission here because there probably will be questions that I can't answer. So, that's, that is the summary that I have for y'all.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron or for the Film Commission? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Ms. Waldron, as I understand it, this has a time period of about five years for them to-
Look, I had another slide. Yes, 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 it does. The exemption would be for a two-year period. The zone could be approved for five years, but there can only be five zones in the state. So, that's just some of the highlights of the law. I think that was the last slide.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, and I read through this, but I'm, you know, besides them getting a sales tax exemption for their things, is there pros and cons on the city end of opening this area? I mean, is it just there for them to make a sales-
I think that's a great question for the Film Commission because they are very much more familiar with the program.
Hi there, I'm Ally Nichols with the Texas Film Commission. This is my colleague Tara Connor. And I'm sorry, what was the question? Is there a pros and cons for the development project?
I mean, I understand this, making this area is going to allow them to not pay sales tax on certain things, but is there a reason the city should allow them to do that? I want to see what's in it for the city side to not get sales tax for them.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the exemption is only for construction costs. This isn't for the actual projects that are going to be filming there. It's just the development of the studio facility itself.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And within the application, they did have to provide an economic impact analysis. It is about a 70-page economic impact analysis that the facility did themselves. It's independent of our office or the city of Bastrop. And it really goes over the numbers of the return that they anticipate the city receiving and the state receiving from the development of this project. I can't speak, I'm not trying to lobby or speak on behalf of the facility itself, but we'd be happy to provide you with a copy of that analysis study.
Understanding more that it's just the construction costs makes it a little bit more careful. So, but thank you.
Council, there's an executive summary on page 367 of the packet and the 70-page analysis is included in the packet.
I saw that, I just wanted to make sure that was what it's law-
Can I just snip, like, what was considered for the local because there was lots of, there was the state represented and the county represented and the local?
Yeah, it was pretty detailed.
So, I kind of put that in your staff report. So I kind of put that in your staff report. It's over a 12-year period though, that $1 million that's referenced in there, so.
Right, so it's pretty wide with this only two years. I was just trying to make sure I understood correctly before I place the vote.
Any other questions? Counsel Member Rogers?
Would you like us to move for MNN together or do you want them separate?
I think we have to read them separately.
Okay, I just want, she had it on her slides that were together, so I was just making sure how you want it.
It's two different resolutions, so I'm, or two different ordinances. So if, I'm happy to, yeah, happy to entertain a motion right now. We're considering 2021-20.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Counsel Member Peterson and a second from Counsel Member Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Member Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Jackson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. That'll be placed on the consent agenda for our January meeting. Item 12N, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-19 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, nominating an area, that being approximately 546 acres located at 1240 Lover's Lane in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bastrop, Texas, for the state of Texas designation as a media production development zone and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, and move to include on the January 11th, 2022 consent agenda for the second reading. So as Ms. Waldron spoke, the 2021-20 is designating it and then this ordinance is nominating it. And the state only allows five at any one time. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we currently only have one other one in Fort Worth, so this would be the second zone.
Okay.
Like to move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Counsel Member Jackson.
Second.
And a second from Counsel Member Crouch. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Member Jackson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Rogers?
Yes.
Counsel Member Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. That is a time sensitive to get that application in, so appreciate those being done. All right, Counsel, we're going back to the bottom of page four and we're going to do 12A next. Consider action to approve resolution number R2021-127 of the City of Bastrop, Texas, extending the extraterritorial jurisdiction as required by the property owner to include approximately 11 acres of State Highway 304 right-of-way and encompassing a 289.5 acre tract owned by the applicant attached as Exhibit A into the City of Bastrop's extraterritorial jurisdiction, more specifically Area A, as described in the interlocal agreement for subdivision plat regulation in Bastrop County and the City of Bastrop's extraterritorial jurisdiction, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I know there's a lot of information in there, but that's exactly about the same amount of information that's in that report. Essentially, there's going to be just a spot about .77 miles outside of the city limits there and just past our ETJ has made a request from the landowner and the applicant to extend our extraterritorial jurisdiction and encompass their property so that they can enter into a development agreement with the city, receive city utilities, and then eventually be annexed into the city. So what we're proposing here tonight with this resolution is to make an adjustment to the map. Essentially, we're going to notify the county, which will be some of the next steps as required by our 1445 agreement. We'll be annexing or moving into the extraterritorial jurisdiction about 11 acres of right-of-way and 289.5 acres of property for a mixed-use development in the future. If that'll take any questions.
And this is all coming at a request of the property owner?
Correct. If you'll notice in your packet, there is a professional services agreement that's already executed to cover any costs associated with any work we need to do.
Just for clarity, for anyone else not to land around that, we're not extending it. It's just that one piece of property.
That's correct.
Just so everybody knows, his neighbor isn't being annexed and everything else, so it's him.
The state highway and just his property.
And this step puts him in the ETJ.
And this puts him in the ETJ, which allows him to enter into a development agreement with the city.
I just want to make sure neighbors all knew they weren't being taken in with him.
Only that piece of property.
Good point.
All right, just want to make sure everybody realized that. I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Counsel Member Rogers and a second from Counsel Member Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel Member Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Rogers?
Yes.
Counsel Member Jackson?
Yes.
Counsel Member Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2021-127 is approved. All right, Counsel, we're on the top of page five. We're on item 12B. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2021-15 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, rezoning 15.824 acres out of Farm Lot 37 east of Main Street located at 1500 Farm Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, from P3 neighborhood to P4 mix as shown in Exhibit A, including a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. So this is the second reading of a rezoning request property that you can see on the location map here. It's one lot off of State Highway 95 between Farm Street and Cedar Street. It's approximately 15 acre tract. You guys last heard this and did the public hearing and first reading at the second meeting in October. A little more location information. You can see here that we have the property in question is here in the middle and it's currently zone P3. You'll see on to the east, it's bordered by P5 Core, which is our commercial district. You've got some P3 here and then you've got a lot of civic space in some areas and then P5, or yes, P5 and P4 to the north and south. So there's a lot of other kind of commercial mixed-use development in this area already. So they're requesting to go from P3 neighborhood to P4 mix, which is a mixed commercial residential district that requires everything to be in a house or a residential form. So apartments, buildings are a residential form. Can't be a commercial building form. Has to look more residential in style. The property is 15.8 acres, which is about two farm lots in our Bastrop vernacular. And they're proposing to maintain the traditional block structure, traditional neighborhood design, which has that farm lot and building block structure. So since the last meeting, the applicant did make some minor revisions to the plan based on some of the feedback that they got during the last meeting. One was they show on the plan, they removed the on-street parking from the Chambers Street, which is going to be extended with their development. So it'll extend from Farm Street all the way to Cedar Street. And so they're showing how they'll be able to have two lanes there with no on-street parking in the first phase with their proportional share. Then they also internally, to make the building block structure, they're providing private driveways that mimic the building block structure. And staff is recognizing that this meets the intent but doesn't meet the actual code requirement, so we are recommending that a TIA be done during the public improvement plan process to address any off-site concerns that may arise from this development. And there's additional spaces for clubhouse amenities and they actually show some actual programming of that area in the site plan. So just to give a better picture of what we're talking about on the block structure with the public streets and the private drives, the blue streets are the actual public streets. So Farm and Cedar already exist, but they will be constructing Cedar, Chambers Street that'll provide that north-south access that we've been lacking in that section between Fayette and 95. Internally, they're going to be providing private drive aisles that kind of mimic city streets to provide that 330 block grid network. One of the connections that isn't going to be made is because of Gil's Branch. We have a pedestrian trail that'll lead to Gil's Branch, but with the way our plans for Gil's Branch, it's going to be kind of prohibitive to put a bridge over to try to reach back another connection to 95. So for this development, one of the things with the B3 code is we're actually asking for a lot more information upfront when we do a zoning concept scheme and propose a rezoning to make sure that the zoning district that they're asking for is something that can actually be achieved on the ground. So with this P4 district, it allows apartment building types. Again, we're a form-based code, not a use-based code, so we regulate by the building type that's allowed in each district. The buildings are oriented towards Chambers Street, which is a requirement of the B3 code to orient all buildings to the public streets to create that interaction between the public and private realm. And they've oriented their parking, you can see, to be parallel on the internal drive aisles leading into the development and then the rest is behind the buildings. So the predominant feature when you're driving down Chambers, Farm, or Cedar is not seeing all the parking. So with the updates, they removed the on-street parking. They increased the on-site parking. So at the last plan, there was 165 spaces on-site and on the street parking. With this plan, they've got 216 spaces that are on-site. That doesn't include any street parking. That equates to 1.5 spaces per unit. The market studies show an apartment complex of this size, that's about what you need. And they added an additional 36 units in case they do ever expand or have some additional apartment units in some of the flex space. They've also reduced one of the flex lots on Farm Street because the drainage pond had to get a little bit bigger to accommodate all the rest of the parking. And they added a pavilion and covered pickleball courts as kind of showing programming for their amenities side. So on here, you'll see the highlights of the different areas that changed from last meeting to this meeting. So you have no on-street parking on Chambers. They added some parallel parking on the east-west drive aisles and additional parking internal to the site. With this plan, again, we're asking for more information upfront. And one of those things is a conceptual drainage plan. And that's to make sure what they're trying to do actually will fit on the site, given all the different constraints. With this site, there are a number of constraints. It is in the floodplain and it does back to Gil's Branch. With the adoption of our stormwater drainage manual, one of the requirements for Gil's Branch was to actually improve the drainage that goes into Gil's Branch, so reducing the amount of water that goes in. So normally, our code says when it's a 100-year storm, you've got to detain and let that water out at the same rate before you develop. Now we say for that 100-year storm, you can only let the water out at the 25-year storm, which is a lot smaller rainstorm. So it actually decreases the amount of water that's going into Gil's Branch that overwhelms the system. They'll also have to address the floodplain mitigation as it is in the floodplain. And that's one of our requirements of our flood damage prevention ordinance. And all of these items will be studied more in-depth and provided during the public construction plans. So that's where we, the engineers, really put the pen to paper and figure out exactly how all of it's going to be built. But conceptually, they know that they can get there with the regulations as they are. One of the things we're also looking at with zoning concept scheme is how are the buildings going to be laid out? How is it going to meet the B3 code? In this case, they've actually studied our pattern book and have come up with some designs that meet the pattern book and the style in Bastrop. They are two and three-story buildings, but they're a style that provides front porches oriented towards the street, provide that architectural interest that matches the style of Bastrop, and also have corner treatments to make sure you're not facing a blank wall, so that you have the front facing on-street and then you just have a blank wall on the other corner, making sure that you provide that interest at all street frontages. So here's some examples of what they've already put together. You can see that they have the open porches, doors, lots of windows oriented towards the street that'll provide that interaction with the public realm, the street front. One of the things that we kind of looked at just when we were studying this is we do have a number of apartments in town and kind of looking at what that density is compared to other apartments. People see, think apartments, think all apartments are the same. So we pulled some of the existing apartments in town. And our actual densest apartment is over off of Old Austin Highway, the Riverwood Commons faces one and two. They actually have 24 units per acre in those two buildings over there. The least dense is Settlement Estates over tucked back on Settlement Drive. On 6.5 acres, they have 70 units, which is 11.4. This development on just the first phase, which is the 10.6 acres, is proposing 120 units, which comes out to 11.3. So this would actually be the least dense apartment we have in town. So going into the B3 code, we have three major intent statements that we tie everything back to in the code. First being geographic sensitivity. One of the things we look at very, the very first thing on every step is drainage, because that has been a major concern for the city. So they're meeting the increased standards for the Gil's Branch watershed with this development. They're adding a stream bank buffer that will remain undisturbed, which will improve the drainage going into Gil's Branch. They're accounting for the new FEMA floodplain data that just came out this year and taking that into account in all of their plans for how they're going to address the floodplain. One of the geographic sensitivity issues, it's impractical in this location to have a bridge over Gil's Branch, so that's one of the things we weren't, staff isn't recommending making that connection in that location. And the buildings are set as far from Gil's Branch to make sure it's as far out of the floodplain. You want to try to get as high bank as you can from a drainage feature so you don't have increased flooding risk. For fiscal sustainability, this development will share its proportional share of Chambers Street to get that road in. It's one of them that has been on our master thoroughfare plan with our grid. It meets the intent of our farm lot structure. They'll be extending utilities, which makes better connectivity in this area where some of the utilities have kind of been, have some gaps in the network. And they'll also be providing additional housing options in this part of town in proximity to workplaces and schools that are fairly close in this area. And then for authentic Bastrop, they do reflect the architectural styles and patterns of the city block. It proposes a site layout that creates that interaction between the public and private realm with the street network. And there are driveways that will mimic the street network. They'll be dedicating land along Gil's Branch as public open space and area for us to do future improvements along Gil's Branch as well. And it continues that form of our farm lots and building blocks that has been missing in this part of town. So after tonight, if this gets approved, the next steps moving forward, the applicant has expressed interest before in possibly doing tax credits in this location. If they were to apply for that, that's got to come back to City Council for consideration. That's something that City Council gets to say yay or nay on before it goes to the state. After that, we'll have subdivision plating. That's where we address the streets, the utilities, the construction plans. All of that gets reviewed by staff and then the Platts will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review. Staff is recommending doing a traffic impact analysis in addition to address any off-site impacts that the development may cause. And that would be administratively reviewed and those necessary improvements would be rolled into the public construction plan phase. The drainage and public improvement plans, that comes in in between the different plating stages. And then once you get the lots established, we'll have site development plan and certificates appropriateness for the actual private development that'll occur on the lot. And then finally, the actual building permits that have the site go vertical. And those will all be administratively reviewed and approved. As of the writing of the staff report, we had a total of 18 responses. Two were in favor. We had zero no objections, but we had 12 opposed. Four of those were duplicate submittals that people had made. But as of December 10th, we have received an official protest per the Texas Local Government Code. It was signed by property owners that represent 39.2 percent of the 200-foot buffer area that we notified per local government code. If you receive a protest that has at least 20 percent, then what that does is it throws the City Council vote to have a three-force majority vote to approve the zoning request. So in this case, that'll be a four out of five vote of council members have to recommend or have to approve for the zoning to be approved. Staff recommends approval of the zoning concept scheme and also recommends that the applicant, that council recommend... the applicant, that council recommend a traffic impact analysis to be done, along with the construction plans. And the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Bills before we hear from the applicant? Councilmember Crouch?
I was curious why the traffic impact analysis isn't a requirement now versus for it to move forward. I mean, I would think that in order for it to move forward, we would want to know what it's going to do to our existing streets and what it's going to do to Farm and Cedar Streets and traffic out on the Highway 95 before we go ahead.
So, that was a change with the B-3 code. When it was adopted, that was when we proactively addressed the 330 block grid, that if developments provided that grid structure, that we were not going to require a traffic impact analysis. There's a lot of different schools of thought on how useful traffic impact analysis are on a site-by-site basis. Keep in mind that it is only going to address the proportional share of the traffic caused by this development. So, there's a lot of existing conditions there that are already there. You don't want to make those worse, but the developer's not necessarily required to fix all of those issues, because their proportional share is not going to be 100% of the issues that exist today. There are going to be some percentage of that. So, that was a policy decision that was made not to require traffic impact analyses. If you're providing the grid, that's why staff is recommending that we do one in this case, since they're proposing to not meet the 330 grid requirement.
So, when you say "policy decision," what do you mean by, who made the policy decision, and when was that made?
It was made when the B-3 code was adopted. It was not one of the requirements in the B-3 code.
Thank you. So, I feel that the traffic impact analysis is very important, because, one, you're dumping a lot of people into an already congested area around several schools. And then, two, if people get congested outputting onto Highway 95 and around those schools, they're just going to drive through the rest of the older portion of town to get out of there. And I don't see how we can make a good decision on it without knowing what the impact's going to be to our city streets, the existing streets, and what we're doing to the people exiting out onto Highway 95 to get out of the property. So, I think that the traffic impact analysis is very, very key and important to having us decide on it. Without knowing that, I don't know.
I just want to remind everybody that we're not going to clap, and we're not going to boo, and we're running a business meeting, so I appreciate you acting accordingly. Thank you very, very much. Mr. Crouch, did you have, were you done? Your light's off.
Yeah, I just, I feel like that ought to be a process before and not after, not after we approve.
And staff, we don't have the ability to require that before it comes in, because it's not in the adopted code requirements, so.
But council could make that a requirement.
But council could make that a requirement for the rezoning.
Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I concur 100% with Councilmember Crouch. And I was just wondering, when I see that the Planning Department, I guess, recommends approval, even with that high rate of disapproval from the neighborhood and everything, I just find that it's hard. I mean, but at least we have the three-fourths vote of the City Council, at least, to protect us in that sense. But I just don't concur with that recommendation. And because of the reaction that I've gotten from the general public, from the neighborhood, I mean, I've only got, I've only heard, I'd only heard from one person until yesterday, and I heard from a second person, I think, who's going to speak tonight. But I just have to go along with the neighborhood and support them on what they're wanting, and that's all I'm going to say at this point until I vote.
Any questions about Ms. Bills' presentation from anyone else? All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Sarah Andre. My company is Structured Development, and I'm here tonight to present from Street Village. This is our proposal. As you know where it is, I want to tell you a little bit more about us. We are partnered with MRE Capital. Together, we own, oh, gosh, six developments that are already in operations throughout Texas. We have one under construction and three more about to be under construction. They are in primarily the Panhandle and in South Texas. We have two under development in Central Texas, one being this development and another one in Austin called Tillery Street. We have over 50 years' experience bringing affordable housing to communities in Texas. I myself have been doing this since 1994, and I'm very dedicated to bringing workforce housing to Texans in need. There is a gigantic shortage of workforce housing, not just in Bashtrop, but in America in general. And if you're unaware of that, all you have to do is tune into the news and the rising home values. The bottom line is, not everyone can afford to be a single-family homebuyer, and many people cannot even afford a decent apartment because of the way those prices are going. And so, our goal is to develop socially vibrant communities, context-sensitive communities, and economically sound communities. So, we're trying to combine all of those things into one here. Once again, this is our site. I want to point out how close it is to Highway 95 and to many other large developments. P-5 is to our south, and even across the street, there is a single-family area that's P-4. But Sally, I'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into that. The design of the building, it's going to be a Class A apartment building. You have other tax credit-funded projects here in Bashtrop. You know what they look like for the most part. We will have a plethora of common amenities and unit amenities. Just to point out a few of the common amenities, we'll have a fitness center. We'll have, it says entertainment room, but where we can host movie nights, party nights, birthday parties, that sort of thing. Those rooms can also be used for community classes on things like wellness, for example, healthy cooking, or physical fitness, that sort of thing, group classes. In the out-of-doors, that space is very important to me personally. We will have community gardens. We'll use native landscaping. That's something I'm very passionate about. And in general, have a programmed outdoor space. It won't just be a, you know, just grass. It will be programmed so that it gets used by our residents and hopefully also other members of the Bashtrop community. The units are also highly amenitized. We will be built with energy-efficient appliances, green building standards. There's some of the things that are mentioned right there, low-E thermal windows, for those of you who know what that is, that keeps the heat out. We will be, it says wired for cable, but generally, at this point, we're just moving straight to fiber, so people will have that in their units. And a number of other developments, just to let you know that it's, you know, a high-quality development. The picture on the bottom left is the interior of one of our developments, so you can kind of get a sense of what it looks like. And then here are some of the other features, just talking about how it's an eco-friendly development. And so, as I said, energy efficient, lighting, appliances, HVAC, all of those things. In addition, we'll offer recycling. We'll do things that are more programmatic in nature, such as integrative pest management, which means you don't just come in and fumigate. You try to deal with the source of the problem first, and then you move on to the hard stuff. Let's see, what else? Oh, let me tell you a little bit about the unit mix. We have one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and those will rent for roughly $1,100 to $1,500. So, this development is targeted at people who earn 60% of the area median income. And while I have been in Bashtrop, talking to various community members, I just wanted to show you all just a few of the flyers I picked up along the way. At some of the various entities here in Bashtrop, advertising that they need workers, the ISD, the Police Department, and all of the salaries advertised on these are within the realm of who would qualify to live in this development. So, this is working families, working people. You must have verifiable income to live there. The rule of thumb is you need to have three times the rent in income to live there. People have to have, their credit will be checked, so they have to have an acceptable credit rating, and they have to, they can't have a criminal background, certain felonies, et cetera, are not allowed to live there. So, you know, this isn't what some of you may be thinking it is in terms of housing that's designed for the workforce. Sally is here. She's my colleague, and she is a certified planner, so she's going to talk about all of the planning details that go with the zoning request.
Hi, my name is Sally Burchett. Excuse me. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. And I had the pleasure and honor of working under Allen's wing for several years, and I've done planning and zoning and annexations across the state. And I'm an experienced land planner. We have started the TIA. We did the initial steps. And this development will add 13 trips in the morning coming in, 43 going out, and in the PM, 42 more trips coming in and 25 leaving. And, excuse me, the TIA is important. You know, staff has recommended it's going to happen. It just hasn't happened yet. And so, I want to, you can check with them later, but as I understand it, all recommendations of the TIA will have to be done on our part. And so, I think that there could be more confidence in that than, you know, considering it worst case. Okay. So, as a planner, the local government code has one primary tenet of, for rezoning, and it's that all zoning decisions should be based on your comprehensive plan. And as you know, yours has, let me see, this worked, okay, it's hard to see, that you have a mix of housing stock, and affordability is one of the most important, is an important part of your comprehensive plan. It's in there multiple times, and your staff also recommends that affordability, having mixed and affordable options in your town is a healthy mix for a good, thriving economic community. As Jennifer noted, this development, this development site is surrounded by mostly as intense or more intense land uses than the P-4. I mean, so there's P-4 in the north, where there are single-family residences, P-5 next to the highway, and a lot of civic space. And if you look at the pedestrian set analysis in the staff report, it notes that changing to P-4 increases the compliance with the B-3 code goals, rather than keeping it as P-3. When we met with Superintendent Edwards, he told us that they had lost some teachers because they couldn't afford to live in Bashtrop, which I thought was, is a compelling story and demonstrates the need for affordable housing in the city. I want to talk next about place-to-place zoning, which was the technique used when the city adopted B-3, because you had, there's approximately 5,326 parcels in the city of Bashtrop, and you can't, one by one, look at every single one when you rezone. So, the reasonable method of using place-to-place was used, and it's not perfect. For example, there is, there's some land in the industrial park that's zoned P-2, that the EDC is currently seeking a rectifying that to make it more reasonable to have industrial use zoning in the industrial park. We took your suggestion of having a neighborhood meeting, and met, since our last meeting, we met with neighbors, nonprofits, and business leaders. When we were here prior, we met with Representative Syria, Judge Poppy, Superintendent Edwards, City Council, EDC, Bashtrop Cares, and have taken feedback from folks and tried to provide everything that was asked of us. We, as Jennifer said, we increased parking to accommodate one and a half spaces per unit for this phase and any future phases that may happen, added pickleball courts, and have tried to make it both meet the B-3 code and what we heard from y'all last time and the community. Here's the site pen. You can see there's a lot of green space. It's not very dense. That 11.3 units per acre doesn't even include all of that property that's east of our North-South Drive. So, it's not a dense development for a multifamily. We, as we talked about last time, we've worked very hard to get the architecture to be context-sensitive and to encourage walking in a healthy community for folks who like to not drive everywhere. And I think it would really be a great place to live, work, and play. I'm going to step down, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Burchett. Council, do you have any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Crouch?
I have a question with the detention pond. So, are the two, you have two out parcels there, future buildings before the pond, and I thought I saw a plan where the pond was next to the street versus away from the street? Or is that still up in the air?
The pond's always been in the same place. The only thing that happened is when we made the three drives wider to accommodate parallel parking on both sides, it shifted a few feet, but it's always been there, basically, at the corner of Farm and Chambers.
And then, can you explain what the, your number three buildings are on both ends?
That's a potential future phase that would be, could be commercial, could be commercial on the first floor, couple residential units on top. It's, but if we were to come back to build something, we have to do this neighborhood regulating plan again. And so, just for good measure, we put in spaces to accommodate the two additional buildings that would, parking spaces, if they were to become a future phase for 12, there's 12 units in each building, so that was an additional 36 parking spaces.
Okay, so they, they would potentially be more resident buildings, not necessarily commercial buildings, or it could be either or?
The two that aren't, that don't have public frontage would be residential apartments, and the other buildings that have public street frontage could be commercial and/or residential. But they're a little bit smaller.
And they would still have to reflect your historic code and your form code, so it's not like they could be commercial, it can't look like a, you know, a drive-through 7-Eleven, for example.
Okay, I just.
But we don't have any plans for those. It's just a carve-out.
Yeah, but you will at some point.
Maybe. I mean, we, I've carved out land on many developments and not used it, so it just depends on how growth goes, how the city goes, how the neighbors go, how life goes.
It's, but to be clear, it's not part of this neighborhood regulating plan. It would have to come back to the city.
I want to commend you guys for listening to the comments that you got at the last meeting, and then adjusting your plan to what it is now, because it's night and day from what it was previously. And I think that you did an excellent job of listening to the input that you did get on the parking. Were you replacing the buildings and the green space and all that? So, thank you for listening to the citizens on that piece of it. Thanks. So, thank you for listening to the citizens on, on that piece of it, thanks.
Oh, it's our pleasure. We, this is a great, you can tell people are passionate about their neighborhood, it's a great place. We see the virtue and love it as well and want to be something you're proud of and, you know, part of the community.
Can, can you elaborate on the length of time that you would own this property? Because there's some perspective that you're just building it to sell it and then you're gone and you're not in Bash Drop anymore, and if you can elaborate on-
That is not the case at all. The minimum hold period would be fifteen years, and that is after stabilization. So, two years of construction plus fifteen years, so seventeen years is the minimum time period that we would hold it. And it will be dedicated as workforce housing for a minimum of thirty years and possibly forty years, depending on which box we check.
So, you guys would actually have ownership for at least fifteen years?
Absolutely.
And is that to meet some funding requirement, or is that?
It's the way these deals are structured, it's part of the financial structuring, so, if we receive an award of tax credits, those require that fifteen-year hold.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
I have a couple of questions for Ms. Bills, for points of clarification. Ms. Bills, I just want to clarify that staff's recommendation to, to approve the zoning concept scheme is based upon the technical aspects of the B3 code and not a personal opinion?
Yes.
And the, the approval of the zoning concept scheme does not necessarily trigger construction, there are still several steps before such happens, and if such criteria is not met, then construction will not begin?
Yes, this is the first, the very first step, and then we still have a full construction plans that have to be done, full drainage plans that have to be done. One of the other requirements of our code, since it's in the floodplain, is that they have to do a letter of map revision with FEMA, so that's another step that they have to go through. So, there's a lot of different approvals that have to get done before they can pull a building permit and start building. So, and if, yeah, at any point this, that it's going to violate any of our codes, it won't move forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rogers?
But to that point that Mayor Protem made, if let's say they, it doesn't qualify, and then we have rezoned it or moved to a P4, and they sell the property without developing it, it stays at P4, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So, if we change it, so even, I just want to make sure I'm clear, if for some reason they stop, it stays with that land, so somebody else could come in, if we change it, somebody else could come in and do something else if for some reason their, their plan doesn't work, correct?
Yes, and they'll have to come back and do a new, it's called a neighborhood regulating plan at that phase, so it's all the same information, it has to come back.
Right, but the zoning won't have to come back?
The zoning won't have to come back, no, but the neighborhood regulating plan will come back.
I just want to make sure that everybody realizes, once you change it, it's changed, okay?
Ms. Bills, with the very good point that Ms. Rogers is making, that the zoning stays with the land regardless of the owner, just like council could require the TIA, we could also set a max of, max number of units as an additional condition to the zoning, is that possible or not?
I'm going to defer to Legal on.
Yes, Mayor, that is an option.
So, Councilmember Rogers, to your point, if, if, if we got to, well, if it's less dense apartments, and that's acceptable, we could add that as an addition of the, and then that would stick with it regardless of who owned it. To your point, it stays with the land, so. Any other questions for Ms. Bills or the applicant before we start hearing from folks who have signed up?
I did want a clarification during, in your staff report, when you reported what the planning and zoning voted, that was before all of the citizens gave their comments, is that not correct? Wasn't that in October?
Yes, ma'am, I believe they had quite a few citizens at their meeting as well.
Okay, I was just making sure that they knew that was way before October, that it happened, before someone's interest.
And just to a clarification, that was in the staff report, our code, a piece of the code got carried over from the previous code that requires a affirmative five votes of P and Z to make an official recommendation to City Council. So, they did vote a majority of four to two to recommend approval, however, it doesn't reach the level of being an official recommendation to City Council. That doesn't affect the City Council's vote at all, so.
For clarification, whether it's an affirmative recommendation or just a vote, it still comes to council?
It still comes to council, and it doesn't have, there's some, if, if they were to recommend denial, that has impacts on council, it has no impacts on council's vote in this case, so.
My point being, they didn't have the petition from the citizens at that point. Those are the things that I was meaning, not the recommendation. I remember, I understand the recommendation typo, I just want to make sure they didn't have the petition and things that we have now at that point, is what I was trying to clarify, thank you.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yeah, I, on one of the slides earlier, I saw something about a tax credit, there's nothing that's been offered as far as that, is that just a-
No, that hasn't, that's something that the applicant may pursue in the future, but that's not, that still has to come back to City Council. With the, with the category that Bash Drop is in now, any tax credit development has to come back to City Council for a recommendation to TDAHCA before their application can move forward.
And that's a state tax credit, that's not a local tax?
That's a state tax credit, so, yeah, it's, it's a funding mechanism that was established in 1984 with the tax reform that is to help affordable housing and workforce housing throughout the US. Since subsidies are given to, in forms of, you know, tax relief for individual homeowners, this helps people on the multifamily side find affordable housing, so.
But it's not a city thing or an incentive, it's a state or federal?
Yeah, it would be, it's a federal tax credit that's administered by the state.
Okay, because I didn't see any of that in the package.
No, and that'll come back to y'all if it, if it.
All right, Counsel, are we ready to hear from the general public? Any other questions for the applicant or Ms. Bills?
I've, I've got one more.
Okay, Councilmember Crouch?
On the tax revenue for the city, do you have the numbers for the tax revenue on what it's going to, what it could-
I do not have that number, no.
Okay.
Sarah Andre, Structure Development. I'm estimating in our operating expenses, a tax payment for property taxes to Bash Drop of $150,000 a year.
Starting at completion?
Stabilization, generally speaking, so, you know, it's not worth as much when there's no building or half a building on it, so that's, that's stabilized occupancy.
Okay. And then, Jennifer, one, one more question as far as the traffic study. The traffic studies that I've seen are going to tell you the traffic flow in and out of the project. I'm not sure how we're going to designate or the, the back traffic coming back through, say, Buttonwood Street or Water Street or some of the streets that are very in poor condition and within the city now. And so, if those are in disrepair now, we add construction traffic, and, and I don't think construction traffic is going to be included in your traffic impact analysis either, at least not my experience with it, but may, correct me if I'm wrong with-
No, the construction traffic, it'll be for the end use, the TIA will take into account the end use. The construction traffic is something that we can address during the construct, public construction plan process, establishing the construction route. In this case, I would imagine it would come up 95 and then take a turn onto Farm or Cedar and have that very small distance to get there. We would not allow the trucks to come through town to, to make that route, so.
Yeah, because that's, that's a lot of traffic as well, and then, like, those two streets that I named off are in horrible shape, so if we're dodging traffic to get out of 95 and we have to come back and go through the older part of town, then that's just that, that much quicker, those streets are going to wear out completely versus fixing potholes on them now. So, that, that won't be included in the traffic study.
No, it'll be for the end, end use that'll be there permanently.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bills. We're going to, here's what I'm going to do, and if you guys were here last time, you saw that I, sometimes I accidentally called people and their faces went real blank because they didn't want to speak and I accidentally called their name. So, the city secretary has helped me out, and we've kind of divided them into the people who want to speak and the people who do not want to speak, so hopefully I do better tonight. But based on that, I'm going to start with the people who want, who want to speak. So, to the best of our ability, we've, we're, we'll be calling them in the order that they were turned in, but I am prioritizing the folks who want, who are wishing to speak. But we will call out everybody's name who's filled something out. The first person that we have is Mary Ellen Arbuckle, and as she's coming to the microphone, I'll remind everyone that Mayor Protem Nelson will be keeping the clock. You'll have three minutes to speak. If you would please state your name and your address, and again, there's lots of us, we want to hear from everyone, we are running a business meeting, so we won't be applauding, we won't be booing, we won't be being mean to each other, we'll be being respectful because that's how we are in Bash Drop. Ms. Arbuckle, if you'll state your name and address.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilmembers, thank you for hearing us. My name is Mary Ellen Arbuckle, I live at 1502 Fayette Street. And so, my question for you guys is, what is your responsibility today, being our city council? Three years ago, we went through the Form-Build Code Process at great expense and with community involvement. It was a long and arduous process. We came together and agreed on this system of codes. It is city council's responsibility to enforce these codes. A great majority of your community are opposed to this coding change and have enlarged numbers and methods express that to you, including here in person. Raise your hand if you're opposed. It is city council's responsibility to your constituents to enforce these codes. Bash Drop is a small town, we benefit from plenty of available property outside the historic district areas that could be developed into apartment living and is already coded accordingly. It is city council's responsibility to recognize that we are not want for suitable development property options. Losing the character of downtown historic Bash Drop will result in Bash Drop becoming nothing but an Austin suburb. It is city council's duty to protect the character of downtown and historic Bash Drop. The owners of properties immediately adjacent to the proposed apartments, following the defining of the, following, shortly following the defining of this property as P3, have invested large sums into, into improvements on their properties. Bash Drop is not a stranger to lawsuits, and while I have no legal knowledge, my thinking is, were I adjacent to this and it was approved and then built, I'd be suing the city that allowed unsuitable development in my backyard with a bird's-eye view into my privacy. It is city council's duty to protect the coffers of the city and the values of the property owners. I oppose this code change. City Council, you are our trusted firewall from unsuitable development. I trust the city council will honor your role as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arbuckle. The next person signed up to speak is Susan Long, Ms. Long. If you'd please state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Susan Long, 1402 Hill Street. Nowhere in the discussion tonight have I heard the reference to this being a historical, historical family home district. It has historic designation. Changing these codes will effectively allow encroachment of business and commercial at an alarming rate. Our wonderful, historic Farm Street community will disappear. It will be gone probably as early as five years after this development goes in, but hopefully it won't. Now, historical designation, like I said, is important. We spent hundreds of hours, many people in this city spent hundreds, maybe thousands of hours, creating these historical districts. Why? To preserve the sites, the history, the homes, the people's lives. With historical designation comes preservation. I do not see any reference to preservation and protection of these sweet, precious, historical single-family homes that have been there for a hundred years. They are not mansions by any stretch of the means, but they are a farm-street, priceless, existing neighborhood that is going to be forced out of existence because of the density of this project. This project would be great somewhere else, but not in this historic district. These little families have been there, multi-generational, some of them have had generation after generation for a hundred years plus in these homes. How did it get the Farm Street designation? All these little homes had a plot of land that they could put a vegetable garden, they could have a milk cow, maybe a goat or two, chickens, well, you've got meat and eggs. This is how they raised their families. This is a form of life that has disappeared. It is in your hands. Preserve and protect the families that live in this neighborhood and preserve this neighborhood was why it was designated as a historical preservation site in the first place. Please, please, vote your conscience and your heart. We grew up in this town, loving each other, respecting each other. Please remember that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Long. The next person signed up to speak is Clint Howard. Mr. Howard, if you'd please state your name and address, you will have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you all today? Thank you for your time. Clint Howard, 405 South Jackson. As y'all know, we have a huge employee problem, employee housing problem, that's, this development doesn't even start to address. We know in the next two years, we're going to have over a thousand new employees coming into the city, and housing is a huge issue, not only for the businesses in town, but for the school district, for the students trying to come to AI and find any kind of affordable housing. The last ten employees I've hired, as we've been rapidly expanding, have all had to move outside of Bash Drop, outside of Bash Drop County even, into Lockhart, Kyle, Buda, Elgin, driving to come here. So, the housing is a huge issue. I would argue that watching the Form-Based Code when it was being presented, this is exactly what was described in that area and in the area around downtown, and so it's not far off from what was presented when that was all being done. I would also argue that this is currently Zone P3, which to my calculations means you could put about seventy duplexes on there, which would create the same traffic problem that y'all are talking about now. So, if you want to do a traffic study, I would argue that this is really too little, too late, and the city needs to be way out ahead of this. There should be seven or eight more locations located wherever they're going to be located. We should be courting developers to come here and incentivizing them to build where we want them to build, and we should do the traffic study for the whole area with all of those places already predetermined, and that way, y'all can have it the way you want it. But right now, we're reactionary to what's coming and what developers are trying to bring to us, and I think that the difference between P3, the property's going to sell, right? The people who own that property are going to sell it, and somebody's going to come in. So, it's either going to be a lot more green area and a very nice built-out apartment complex, or it's going to be a whole lot less green area and it's going to be built out into rental property, and you're still going to have the same issue. So, I would say to the city and to the community, growth is coming like a freight train, and we need to get out ahead of it and stop reacting to it. And I want to remind everybody that the decision that's being made today is just a decision of zoning. All of the concerns that y'all have still have to come forth, they still have to prove that they can do the drainage, they still have to prove that they can do the traffic. So, it's not an issue of this is going to give them carte blanche, and anybody who else comes down the road is still going to have to do all that same stuff, they're still going to have to prove. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next person to have signed up to speak is Gary Moss. Mr. Moss, if you'll state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
You got it. Gary Moss, 1706 Wilson Street, 1708 Wilson Street, 120 Bones Road, how's that? And you're welcome for the HOT taxes that my two Airbnbs are bringing to you for sure. What I want to talk about is this issue between P3 and P4. I don't think the people that are against this thing really have a clear understanding- I don't think the people that are against this thing really have a clear understanding of what the issues are behind this thing, because people can develop this property more densely than what these people are proposing to do. Making it a P4 makes it smaller and will be a lot easier to handle. Being able to build something that looks historic is possible in Bass Drop. I've done it, and people can do it like I did. I'm a house, got a house that's a year and a half old that looks like it's a hundred years old. It was on the tour this weekend, everybody, what they stated, looks a hundred years old. But it's ironic that Fair Housing Month is, is stated here in, for Bass Drop, and this is what we're talking about, is affordable housing. Things have changed. You cannot build a bunch of three hundred thousand dollar houses in that little area there and make it viable. It's up to you all to make a decision for these people that really don't have a clear understanding. You're in a better position to understand that this is a pretty good use of the property. And changing from P3 to P4 makes it even better, not worse. I don't think a lot of people understand this thing. And it's your job to make that decision for them, because you're better informed than they are. Not in my backyard is not a good excuse for not doing this project. It will bring affordable housing, which is needed. Everything is going to get more dense in this area. It has to. Bass Drop needs to look at the other areas that need to be developed. There's, you know, there's a lot of areas that have a lot of open land, just the way it was developed, that need to be built. There's two, three acre sites that are landlocked that people can't get to. We need to take, address that. And most of the development in Bass Drop as well should be for affordable housing and make it affordable for everybody. And it's a nice place, let's keep it that way. But you guys got to do this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. The next person I have is Cheryl Wood. Do not wish to speak. Gosh dang it. Do you want to? Okay, sorry.
Cheryl Wood, thirteen oh five Hill Street. I think it would be best to preserve it differently, have these people go somewhere else and make it a school for the elementary schools, because you're going to have the precursors coming in, you're going to have the three and the four-year-olds taking over the current Hill Street School, what's her name, to something else. Anyway, that's my saying it. Thank you very much, Bob.
I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm, it's completely my fault. Marie Blazek. Marie Blazek. Marie Blazek wished to speak in opposition. Roland Serna. Mr. Serna, if you'd set your, say your name and your address.
My name is Roland Serna. I live at eleven oh four Hill Street. I would like to speak in favor of this development, because I feel like the opportunity to live in a walkable community should be given to everyone, regardless of your wealth status. Like, I feel like for people like me, I'm a student, I, I just came from A&amp;M, and I couldn't find a place that was affordable for me, because I just, I don't have that kind of income. So why should I be discluded from living in the beautiful downtown area simply because I don't make enough money? I feel like with this development, it's going to really fit into the, the community. It's going to make the area beautiful, and it's going to bring business to Bass Drop. It's going to allow families that are not given that opportunity of life to live in a neighborhood and walk, walk to businesses, walk to school, and support the business instead of living in an apartment where they're forced to drive or commute when they, they can't, they can't make it that way. I feel like this, this is just something that, you know, Bass Drop is changing, and it's going to change regardless. The people previously speaking had a point. It's, it's going to happen. And whether it happens this way, where it's a beautiful, walkable community, or a bunch of duplexes, it's going to happen regardless, which is why I feel like also the, the traffic analysis, I feel like that's kind of a moot point, especially with the Tesla building that, the, that area there. We're just going to get a lot of people here moving from Austin, so we're going to have traffic regardless. It just depends on how we're going to do this. So I would like to appeal to your generosity and your compassion for people with lower income and for people in the workforce, like, like me and like my family, you know, usually minorities, who would like to live in this, in this neighborhood. It's going to stay historic, is the thing. I know a lot of people are afraid that it's going to change and that it's going to somehow mar the community, but I would like to ask, how, how can diversity mar a community? How can it ruin a community? I feel like diversity will make this community more beautiful. Like, I feel like people like me, you know, people who, who just, who can't afford to live in, in, can't afford a home, we, we deserve to be in this, this beautiful community. I feel like it should be shared. I really feel like this is an opportunity for, for all people, and it will benefit everyone. Thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pablo Serna. Mr. Serna, if you'll state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Pablo Serna, eleven oh four Hill Street. I thought we tagged him today. So I wanted, and as someone mentioned, you do have a tough job. You, you have to thank for a lot of us and a lot of people that aren't here. You probably are aware how many people rent in the city of Bass Drop. It's close to, it's about thirty-eight percent on some numbers that I saw. So there's a lot of people that have to rent. And if we, one sure way to, to create sprawl is to not diversify an area. If we have one type of housing stock, all single-family, we're going to have to, that, people are going to move here, but the house, just to build a house, and we have a builder here, just to build a house, it gets more expensive, the closer you are to the more affordable, desirable areas, it'll be very expensive, so we're going to exclude a lot of, a lot of people. We have schools, and I know, I don't know what the breakout, I was looking for that, couldn't find it, but the breakout of the people who go to that school, where they come from. We're fortunate, we live close by, our kids can walk to Circa, so that's great. I had a quote here, Wilhelmina Delko, this is Austin, a while back. She said, "I lived in Austin, East Austin, for sixty years, and I do not recognize it anymore." And what she's talking about is gentrification, and that's kind of what you're looking at right now. What's going to happen? If this stays, single-family development, a single-family house, you can't build them like you used to. We got a good house, we got a good deal. Those small houses, the infill's going to go fast. And that's what's coming to Bass Drop. It's already hit other communities around here, so I think your job, and what we did to B3 code, was for developments just like this, to think smartly, do it in a historic context, and to, and to understand, we have to have a diversity of housing stock to make this, these communities walkable by just a lot of people, not just people who could afford a single-family home. So I thought I'd add you up.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Kevin Lippi-Malby. I hope I said that correctly. Oh, I know Lippi. There you go. If you would state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Kevin Malby, two oh six Jennifer Lane. Well, I was going to say what some of the other people opposed to this were going to say about the historic district and the zoning changes. The only thing that I haven't heard tonight is, is this will create a precedent that you're going to have to argue against every time somebody wants to change zoning. If you allow this zoning to change now, you're going to have endless people coming to you to change zoning. Maybe some of these guys that want to develop in the historic district, who thinks it's a good idea, it's going to keep happening, and the historic district is going to disappear, and it's going to get rezoned, one application at a time, one lawsuit at a time. If you decide you can't, if you decide you want to stop doing this, you're not going to be able to, because people are going to sue you into doing it, because you do it this one time. It's going to set a precedent. So I think it's important that you don't do that. But, and then, so I had a whole thing written, but everybody else has said what I was going to say. The other thing I would say is this parking, it looks like they just stuck it on there. It's, who's going to park all the way over there when there's street parking right in front of the buildings? And who's going to park over there when it rains? This is, this is just, this doesn't look like it's well-planned. It looks like they just heard what everybody complained about last time and changed the drawings. Doesn't look practical. But I'm not a city planner. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyndi Larson. If you would please state your name and address. You will have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lyndi Larson. I live at thirteen twenty Farm Street. And I want to say that the pickleball courts will only add more traffic to our heavily trafficked streets. How did the proposal by the same developers for a five-acre, sixty-two-unit senior living complex morph into a fifteen-acre, seventeen-building, three stories, with a hundred and fifty-six apartments, three being commercial, in less than a year? How did the proposal make it through planning and zoning to the city council, when it's a violation of our own city ordinance, which has adopted the B3 building code? In fact, the role of planning includes the following: to lessen the congestion in the streets, prevent overcrowding of land, and to avoid undue concentration of population. The citizens of Bass Drop and over fifty percent of the property owners within two hundred feet of this development have opposed this rezoning through written petitions and official protests. In fact, only three people were pro-development at the last city council meeting. Two of them were our city's own planning and zoning commissioners, and I see that's going on again tonight. Chambers Street, the most highly impacted street in this proposal, and also its Achilles heel, even opposes this development, because no matter how much time over two years, or how much money, millions, thirty to forty million, they still can't make it work. Ms. Hoskins, directly across the street, Ms. Hoskins, directly facing Chambers Street and this development, and myself, side-facing Chambers Street, both within twenty-five feet of this development, together own all the property from Farm Street to Cedar Street, all the way up to the packed center. With three exits onto Chambers, we will have three hundred cars coming and going with our headlights shining directly into our homes every single day and night for as long as we live or own our home. The property owners off Highway ninety-five within two hundred feet already deal with high-impact traffic situation on a daily basis, and they could have fifteen acres of three-story apartments towering over their backyards. I respectfully ask the city council members to support the property owners and our official protests, which you have and will, and support us in opposing the rezoning of our historic P3 neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person I have to speak is Nancy Wood. Ms. Wood, if you'll state your name and address. You will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Nancy Wood, nine oh six Walnut Street. I had the honor and a wonderful career as a, as the first Main Street Director for this city. And through that process of almost nine years, I had some incredible learning. One of them was the process we went through with Form-Based Code. This city is worth all of the preservation efforts that have gone into it. It is also worth providing an opportunity like this for people to be able to live in our historic downtown and afford their home. The young man, young Serna who spoke, he's absolutely correct. There is an opportunity in a development like this, and when we were doing our Form-Based Code process, we had a lot of brainstorming about what this vacant property could look like. This is the one property in the historic area that could provide some density for people to come and join this wonderful, walkable community, and we could grow our next preservationists out of the families, the young people, the young professionals, the teachers, that could live in a property like this. So that is why I am speaking in favor of encouraging this zoning to be able to do that. And I did notice on one of the maps that either end of this is already zoned P4. I'm not sure how we missed that in the process when we were putting everything together, but this is a perfect kind of thing. And one of the things I absolutely love about the design, thank you very much, whoever put that together, was there's front porches. This community has wonderful front porches. Let's add these. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Smith. Mr. Smith, if you'll say your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Daniel Smith. I live on fifteen oh four Cedar Street, and my wife is named Linda Cruz Smith. And I want to thank you all for letting me have this opportunity to speak with you all tonight. My wife and her family have been living on this property for over seventy-nine years. We have several neighbors out here that's been living in this neighborhood for decades. We are here tonight to voice our opposition for changing the zoning code of P3 to P4 for the development of a hundred and twenty apartment units between Farm Street and Cedar Street. I have two major points of concern. One, I read, cut the thunder taken out from some of our councilmen on traffic. First is traffic. Traffic is a nightmare on Cedar Street and ninety-five during the following times: beginning and ending of school hours, events at the Performing Arts Center, and games and events at Earhart Stadium. There are times that we can't even get out of our driveways. You can ask some of our neighbors, like Chuck Hughes and the Spooners, they can't even get out of their driveways at times. Now, with addition of the hundred and twenty cars, there's going to be more than that, probably two hundred, it's only going to get worse. And it's never been mentioned of this problem from the planning commission developers on this traffic from the very beginning. Another problem is considered, it's in the flood zone. Planning and zoning commissioner Harris asked several questions in the, in the planning commission hearing regarding this problem, and he never really got any answers, but he said it best. It's in a flood zone and it's in a junkyard. If the city council is allowed to have these hundred and twenty apartment units built on five buildings, paved roads, parking lot, crosswalk, now they're going to add a clubhouse and pickleball courts, where's the water going to go? According to one of our neighbors who live on ninety-five, he told me he knows where the water's going to go. It's going to come right to his property, and it happened before. Most of us neighbors have been living in this neighborhood for a long time. We love Bass Drop, we love this neighborhood, and we plan to stay and live here. But department, developers really don't care about our neighborhood. They just want to build these apartments and go on to the next project. For these reasons, we do not want to change the P3 to P4 zone. Again, thank you for letting me have this opportunity to voice my opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jared Haruska? How close?
Pretty close.
If you'd state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, folks. Thank you. My name's Jared Haruska. I live at eleven oh five Buttonwood Street. I'm representing people that are new to Bass Drop, because I've only been here about two and a half years. When I was born, we lived in a house in the Houston Heights, and I watched how that turned into what they call Disneyland now. My folks lovingly restored a Victorian home before we fled to greener and calmer pastures west of Austin in the nineteen eighties. As a, as a young man, and eventually as a voter, I began to watch as city officials in Austin and developers began to auction off the very soul of the city, which we see happening today, and really compromise what it was that made it a desirable location and a unique location. So it was time for me to move. Why Bass Drop? Well, unlike Cedar Park, Round Rock, Dripping Springs, and any other place I can think of like that, that once maintained some geographical and cultural autonomy from the metroplex, Bass Drop has a sense of place. It's a place you go to. It's got charm. It's got an apparent reverence for its history. So those were all things that I was attracted to. But regardless of the specter of Farm Street Village, I realized that two and a half years later, I was already late to the party, because we see increased rush hour, which is not something I expected here. We see the HEB unmanageable. We see shopping overflow coming out into our feeders and streets, blocking traffic, and without many proposed solutions for those existing problems that I see currently. I'm afraid to observe Bass Drop jumping into similar patterns as Central Houston and Austin have chosen, leading to the community's irreversible handicaps. For example, today, I was driving across Hazel Street, and it was one-thirty, and I live right over by Mina Elementary. and it was 1:30, and I live right over by Mina Elementary. Already, the cars are starting to pile up at 1:30, and we know this is gonna go on to 4 o'clock when rush hour is in full swing. Some of you may have observed that Farm Street has no speed bumps. It serves as a racetrack for people that want to race their cars down there, despite the children that live on that street and the schools nearby. Add to that the train every hour or so, sometimes with 100-plus cars, the Performing Arts Center, the Convention Center, the movie theater, 95, and its associated businesses, as well as the two schools. So let's consider 250, I'm gonna venture, more cars because this is Texas, and nobody walks much of anywhere. The flooding, this is one of the most flood-prone areas of Bassdrop, from what I understand. So I'm still trying to wrap my head around the things that we haven't gotten answers on yet here before we vote on this tonight. I'm not sure how that works. But I really don't want to sound like I'm against workforce housing. I just don't understand why this project has to be rammed into this property when there's plenty of property all around Bassdrop that's not in the historic downtown district. So this domino falls, as this gentleman said over here about, you know, this one domino falls, and how do we get out of the pattern that we've created, the precedent that we've created for ourselves in that case? So just like this seal up here says, "Preservation of the past, progress for the future." I do not see this development finding a balance within those two ideals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person they have is Kristi Foreman. If you please state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Kristi Foreman. I live at 1504 Farm Street. And I was just gonna say, I'm opposed. And I had other stuff, but I know y'all are tired of hearing the same stuff over and over. But this is literally in my backyard, that all of this construction will be just visible. And I don't think any of you would want this in your backyard, so that's all. Just to keep it P3 and make it smaller is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sahila Casper? I don't think I did very good. How'd I do? If you'd state your name and address.
Selah Motacasper, and I live at 703 Farm Street. Thank you for your time. I'm a professional historic preservationist, and I sit on nearly half a dozen historic preservation state and national boards. But today, I come to you as a constituent. About four or five months ago, my husband and I moved here from Houston, also from the Heights. So this issue is very near and dear to my heart regarding historic preservation, but also my lived experience. As proposed, the P4 mixed-use project of 120 apartment units on nearly 16 acres will critically endanger the historic district. Bassdrop Building Block Code for Land Use Regulation was created to maintain Bassdrop's community identity while accommodating growth as a city. What I ask us to consider is why would you put a new 15-plus-acre development in a historic district? At nearly 16 acres with multiple buildings, the designated district is clearly, proves to be improper infill. For me, the issue is the location, not the housing. Rezoning a historic neighborhood with a large mass-scale development, as proposed, is very counter to any historic district. It threatens the feeling, association, and cultural context of Farm Streets, Farm Lots, and the Iredelle Historic District. As laid out in B3 code, especially speaking to authenticity, natural landscapes, and scale, words that we see flutter throughout the code itself. I also want to caution setting a precedence in the historic district to upzone, as proposed. Upzoning is a dangerous line to toe for historic communities. We only need to look at sister cities to see what comes into this domino effect. There are also numerous studies on these types of ramifications. And then also on the comment of affordable housing or workforce housing, I also want us to question whether $1,000 to $1,500 really is affordable housing. You know, if it truly is a housing, an affordable housing issue, then let's do that study and see exactly what our constituents can afford here. Additionally, I'm extremely concerned with safety from such significant vehicular traffic on Farm Street. As mentioned, I live right at the corner of Main and Farm, and every day get to see children, walk to the park, see parents, see the elderly heroically trying to cross streets, navigate through incongruous sidewalks. These, you know, as was stated earlier, we have up to three-bedroom apartments. That could be two, three additional cars on top of the 120 units. So I was also very happy to hear Councilmember Crouch's statement on traffic analysis. These are all things that we really need to consider. There's ample vacant land outside of the historic districts that is more compatible with such mass scaling, that supports more housing supply, and the vehicular traffic and parking needed for the two-to-three-bedroom apartments along with new commercial businesses. I urge you to reconsider the proposed budget, do more feasibility studies, and select a better location to listen to your constituents to help preserve the historic footprint of the Iredelle Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. Jolene Yanee?
Good evening. My name is Jolene Yanee. I'm representing 1500 Farm Street. I live in Bassdrop. My youngest child goes to school in Bassdrop. I'm a business owner here, and I have four employees that also live here locally. But this zoning change request is also very personal to me. My husband and his family own these 15 acres. When they purchased the land in 2017, from the very beginning of the land acquisition, I knew that the future development, the development that has been four years in the making, in the thought process, I knew that the development had to be very special. I knew that I wanted to be a part of something that honored and promoted the authentic spirit of our community, the community in which I grew up in. We've been through multiple developers. We've had engineers' plans and site drawings that couldn't or didn't make it past the development processes for one reason or another. We've worked with two different city managers, four different BDC directors. We've been here during a standstill while the city completed a nine-month flood/drainage mitigation study on Gill's Branch. We've been here through all of the building block codes when the city wasn't taking development applications at all. But the new B3 codes are everything that I imagined this land was going to be. We didn't know the future for this land when we purchased it. We haven't gone through a rezoning request in the past. I am aware of what can be built currently in the P3 zoning. I hope that those who are opposed to this request also have done their research on what can be built in a P3. We're happy to be here at this juncture with Structure Texas. These ladies have been the most honest, upfront, and transparent developers that we've worked with. I've been very disappointed to see the community's reaction to a proposed housing development that seems to check so many boxes of the intention of the B3 code. The walkability, the sustainability, the environmental responsibility. A traditional neighborhood development, and I want to quote this, "offers a wide variety of dwelling types within the neighborhood. They usually take the form of houses, row houses, and apartments so that younger and older people, single and family, the poor and the wealthy may find a place to live." A greater variety of housing type downtown will provide the community with a way to age in place. Housing will attract new talent to key workplace fields. And three, housing varieties means that an individual or a family is able to make their budget stretch a little further, and that might just be able to increase their buying power here in our local businesses. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Allison Bumstead? How'd I do?
Hi, I'm Dr. Allison Bumstead, and thank you so much for letting me speak. I live at 1316 Farm Street. I'd like to note that if I were speaking to the school board at BISD, I would disclose that I was a teacher. I don't appreciate that I had to walk into a planning and zoning office to realize one of the people who keeps speaking in favor of this development has a conflict of interest and does not disclose that he works for this development. I think it's unsavory and suspect. Two, we all know the traffic on 95 is bad. This zone, this apartment is zoned to Emile IS Elementary. Is that true? It's, I've looked at the zoning map, and my house over is Emile. So that means you would have to cross Farm Street, and you would have to cross Chestnut Street. Well, I just walked over here on Chestnut Street and had to wait quite a while as an adult, looking both ways to get safely across. You might be able to cut through the Convention Center to get there, but you most likely would have to walk along 95 and build many crosswalks to get these students safely to school. And let's not forget, guys, we came from Austin. I'm originally from Spring, Texas. I watched my Goodyear Blimp Field become a Home Depot and a Lowe's across from each other. We have been evicted from our apartment in Austin from developers. Developers care about one thing. We can humanize them, and I'm sure they're great people, but they care about the bottom dollar. Because why else would they challenge the code you've adopted? Except, except to make more money. This is Pandora's box. If they can rezon, why can't I? Why can't I propose my house to become a café and then build two stories on top? Because if they can do it three stories, or three stories down, then why can't I? Why can't anybody else? You want Austin? Well, here it comes. Because the first thing I will do is what everyone else has had to do in Austin and Houston. And that's petition for parking, historic parking permits that will make it difficult for the parade, difficult for the convocation, and difficult for any tourists coming into town. Because I don't have a driveway. I've called the city for my curb to be cut, and I haven't been, haven't had a call back in return, so things do move slow. So I will petition to that the second this passes. And look, and I've said this before in letters to the city councils, anywhere can look like 71. In geography, we call that placelessness. But Bassdrop looks like somewhere. It looks like your home. It looks like a special historic place. Nobody is opposed to affordable housing, which should be Section 8. We're using the word affordable, and we're not using it correctly. It's not Section 8, I know, but when we use affordable housing, that's what it means. And let me tell you, anywhere in Austin, there's nowhere for teachers to live. I am a teacher, and I live in Bassdrop. I want to be clear about that. In the words of Joanie Mitchell, "Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you got till it's gone? Pave paradise and put up a parking lot. Pave paradise and put up a parking lot."
Thank you. The next person we have signed up is Cheryl Long.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Long. I've lived here most of my life at 1501 Church Street. I also grew up in the Houston Heights and own a historic home here in town. I am very much opposed to this rezoning proposal. It is unethical for the city of Bassdrop to rezon a significant and established historical neighborhood. The Iredelle Historic Farm Lots provide a contribution to Bassdrop's history. This area is paramount, essential and necessary to the city of Bassdrop and its citizens. It is a historic neighborhood, and we have very few of those left. I do understand that Bassdrop is growing and development is coming. But areas such as this do not need to be rezoned to fit a developer's agenda, especially when this development will add to more traffic, population pollution, to an already high-density area. There has not been one study done, traffic, flooding, et cetera. 1500 Farm Street has a history of flooding. To purposefully destroy a historic neighborhood is wrong. Therefore, as a citizen of Bassdrop defending its history, I oppose this rezoning proposal. Please, council members, we need your help to protect our historic neighborhoods.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kay Rogers.
My name is Kay Rogers. I have a business at 1010 Chestnut Street. I've been there for 23 years. I wanted to talk to y'all about the traffic. I was coming in from Algen this afternoon at 4:20, and I sat through Hawthorne Light three times. And traffic was just flooding out of Cedar Street, flooding out of Farm Street, coming out of Cypress Street. And I'm thinking, gee, isn't this close to that proposed development? And what about health and safety concerns? What about the people that already live and work here? I know that you're looking out after them, but I really hope you have a traffic study. I was gonna ask if you'd had a traffic study, and then Councilman Crouch made that his topic. But the traffic on 95 is horrible. I have to travel down 95 from Allen Creek to get to Sayers two or three times a week to feed some cows. And it's unbearable trying to get through there. And I can't imagine why you would want to allow a high-density development that proximate to Highway 95, which would only confound the situation. I'm sure there's other locations you could put a high-density apartment complex. But that part of town, I ask myself, why hasn't Chambers Street ever been opened? I mean, I know there's drainage questions there, but I would ask myself, why hasn't Chambers Street ever been open? Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is R. Darren Kestlis. If you'd state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Oh, Dad's Richard. So I'm Richard Darren Kestlis, 705 Farm Street. I bought my great aunt Margaret's house about 20 years ago from my dad and my uncle. Councilman Crouch already said most of the things I was thinking in my head. Maybe it's because your mama taught me at a Lockhart intermediate school, and she taught me well. I don't like for anybody to be unhappy. So this is just my bizarre idea in that the city has land. If we could give these nice developer ladies some land, or give them a deal for it so they can make some money, and if we can give the lady who bought the property the old wrecking yard in 2017 when we should have bought it, the city should have bought it then before she bought it, give her the money she needs for the land, the same profit she'd make from there, let's make everybody happy. Surely there's some land somewhere that's not in the historical district. You know, I lost on the chickens, but then I found out Ms. Jenkins and Ms. Albers were getting harassed by the roosters. It wasn't the chickens, it was the roosters. I lost on that one. But this one's more important. And maybe I wonder if we left the chickens there, if they would have been interested in this property. But that's my main deal, is surely there's some sort of compromise we can come to to where they can make their profit, both entities, and we can do something different with that land. The school district was gonna buy that land, but supposedly there was environmental impact that they couldn't do it. And I still wonder about that also. Thank you.
If you'd please state your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Hughes. I live at 1303 Cedar Street, here in Bassdrop. My husband's family has lived at that address or on that property for 151 years. So we are old Bassdrop residents. I've only been here for 26 years. Chuck and I have been married for almost 40 years, but the first part of it was in Austin. We left Austin to come here because we were gonna be able to build a house on family land that had been treasured for years. We have had chickens and cows on that land. We've had milk and eggs, and it's been wonderful. Well, it was before I came, anyway. They've been gone since before I came. But we still enjoy the openness of the land that we have. Our house is on an acre and a half, which is unheard of in the city. But we are so thankful and grateful that we have that place to live on. We are next to the PAC building, which is a beautiful building. It's something that Bassdrop has needed for a long time. Chuck and I were both with employees of the school district, and we know that the school district has needed a Performing Arts Center for a long time. And we were very happy to have it be there. We had one condition with the school district was that they'd not been, built a huge fence on our south side so we could keep that south breeze. And they didn't build a huge fence, so PAC is fine. The main thing that we, problem that we have is with the Farm Street Village is the density that it's gonna be there. The, all the apartments are gonna be facing Chambers Street, which has never been opened. I don't know how on earth they're gonna be able to open it and have it be wide enough for two-way traffic. That just doesn't seem possible to me. They're gonna have to either eat into their land, which will push their buildings back, or eat into the PAC land, which will take up PAC space, and I'm not sure that's a good idea either. But the other thing that... bothered me, a couple of days ago, I had to go over to Home Depot, and I went down 304 and turned in, you know, behind Home Depot at that light. And I just happened to glance to the left, and I saw these apartment buildings. And I'm sure you've seen them, if you've been to Home Depot and gone that way. And I thought, oh, my God, that's two and three stories. That's what's going to be built just across the PAC lot from where we live. This is a, it was already in the shade. This is on the other side, so it's kind of sunny. But I thought, that's going to be on two sides of our property. It's going to look like a tunnel. And that's not something that goes along with the wide-open spaces that we have treasured for the 150 years that his family has had that land. So we are opposed to this development. I know Bastrop needs apartments. It needs other living arrangements for people, but not there. Not in historic Bastrop, not in town. Thank you.
Thank you. I have dug through my stack two or three times. Is there anyone else? And I really, in my heart of hearts, thank everyone else, and I'll read your names, have checked the "I do not wish to speak." Is there anyone who is treasuring their three minutes, and I have not called your name? And I don't see your, Vanessa Lindsay, do you have a form? Ms. Lindsay, why don't you come forward, say your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes. There's lots of paper up here, and I may have missed it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Vanessa Lindsay, 162 Eland Avenue.
I'm going to interrupt you real quick. Colin, it sounds like we've lost the mic. Make sure we didn't, there we go.
Is it on? Okay, good.
Thank you.
I'm Vanessa Lindsay. I live at 162 Eland Avenue. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I worked in the real estate industry, and then also previously, I worked for the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. That history has given me a little bit of knowledge about people coming into town. I think this conversation's really about growth, right? We're talking about growth, and growth is an exciting thing, but oftentimes, in the process, it's super painful. And that seems to be where we are, kind of as a community, in many different areas, but this one being no exception. I pulled some real estate stats. In the housing market, the average closing price for single-family homes in January in Bastrop County, January 2020, was $264,000. In November of 2021, it was $420,000. That's an increase of 159% in less than two years. And I would dare say that many young families can't afford those homes, those home prices. I am a mom of young adult, of a young adult child, and he can never, he cannot afford to buy a house in Bastrop County, or Bastrop City, sorry. So market experts expect this trend, this surge, to continue. When I worked for the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce, I answered the phone all day long and got to speak with many prospective residents, people asking questions about our community and about our town. And their question was, what's Bastrop like? What will I find when I come to town? What will I, what will we have? And I, what I told them was this. I said, Bastrop is a very special place to live. And what we have done well, and what you guys, council, and our leadership have done well, is maintaining our rich legacy on one hand, and then embracing growth with the other. And it's a back-and-forth struggle, and we've been very effective in our desire to, to be that, to be that person, so that we can maintain the rich legacy, but at the same time, have growth. This project seems to fit that bill. This project seems to look like old Bastrop, but yet will embrace growth and affordable housing that my children need to have access to. One more, one more thing I was going to say is, I understand that by changing code, you fear setting a precedent. But I would also counter with people having good places to live, safe places to live, beautiful places to live is more important than setting a precedent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? I do not want anyone to say, man, I really wanted to talk, and she wouldn't call my name. Anybody else? If you'll come forward and say your name and your address, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Tommy Claiborne, 708 Walnut, 1202 Bacon, 1502 Water, 1202 Church, 1200 Wilson, 1509 Hill, and 1010 Chestnut. And suffice to say, I've been here for a while. I've been all over this area more times than you can even imagine. I'm really surprised and happy to see so many brilliant people have moved into Bastrop and in Bastrop, because they seem to agree with me about what they're saying. Going back to Councilman Crouch on there, that first thing that he said was actually the water retention. That is, that is a big, big problem. Because, as was pointed out by Mr. Smith, when you put all that extra pavement and everything on that property, the water has to go someplace. Gill's Branch does not stop at Farm Street. It goes all the way on down to MLK. And there's two bridges right there on MLK. One of them is on Pine Street, one of them is MLK. And I've been on those bridges when they've been underwater. Now, with the construction that's going on on the new highway, the new bridges and stuff, that's also causing a lot more water. So suffice to say, it could, it could back up. On the traffic problem, it's been addressed pretty, pretty thoroughly here. But if you can't imagine this, you're a mother, and you're going to pick up one of your kids at school, and you run into all this traffic. But you've got two kids, and you've got to get to the other side of town to pick up the other one. Now, how are you going to be able to do that? There's just nothing we can do about the traffic problem right now. I can see traffic lights at Farm Street, and I can see traffic light at Cedar Street, just to be able to manage it. And by opening up Chambers Street, that's not going to alleviate it. It may think it's going to alleviate the traffic a little while, but that's going to be going like that, just people back and forth on that. I haven't heard anybody get up here and say they're against growth. That's not what I've heard. I've heard them concerned about, you know, the traffic and the safety and every inconvenience that's going to cause the people that already live here. And I trust the, okay, I trust, I trust the council to do, make the right decision. But on that water coming through Gill's Branch, Bill's well aware of it, because his parents' house lives right behind it, and he does, too. So it can get up, and it is a, is a big safety hazard, could be. And I know you all do your due diligence and do the study and do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Last call. All right. Councilman, I run through to the best of my knowledge, the folks that are left did not wish to speak. So I'm going to say their name, and I'm going to say whether they were for or against, because that's what I'm going to do. All right. I'm not going to bother saying their address. That will be recorded as a part of the record. Patrick Haney is in support. Clay Ingram is in support. Michael Hosford is in support. Bob Helbush is opposed. Jana Helbush is opposed. Martin Conrady is opposed. Elva Conrady is opposed. Nicole Albers is opposed. Rebecca Denise Bennett is opposed. Del Fabus, F-A-U-B-U-S, sorry if I did bad on that one, is opposed. Jared Smith is opposed. Morris Mock is opposed. Charles Carmen is opposed. Margaret Barton is opposed. Edward Smith is opposed. Esther Hernandez is opposed. Joe Cruz is opposed. Georgane Shockley is opposed. Anthony Hostetler, Hostetler, I think that's right, is opposed. Aristo Leal is opposed. Linda Smith is opposed. Etta Madison is opposed. Linda Green is opposed. Alan Olson is opposed. Jerry Wall is opposed. Nikki McDowell is opposed. Heidi Hirsch is opposed. Okay, we're going to do something different on this one. 1006 Austin Street is opposed. Jerel Leveki, Leveki, I think, is opposed. Cruz Jelish, 703 Fayette, is opposed. Jerry Loudon is opposed. Christine Hostetler is opposed. Mildred Namkin, nice handwriting, and I'm not surprised, is opposed. Pat Greenus is opposed. Wilma Mays is opposed. Ruth Emanuel is opposed. Peggy Pagan is opposed. Rodrick Emanuel is opposed. Adalina Leal, 1710 Linda is opposed. Clark Shockley is opposed. Raymond Leal is opposed. Helen Juarez is opposed. Jamie Hernandez is opposed. Leola Carmen is opposed. Atzen Miranda is opposed. Trying to make sure. Helen Widener is opposed. Catherine Albers is opposed. Jared Smith, sometimes I feel like I'm reading these names again, is opposed. Linda Smith is opposed. Gabrielle Serna is in favor, in support. John Larson is opposed. Curtis Zavodny, 1615 Cedar Street, is opposed. James Foreman is opposed. Betty Warren is opposed. Michael Wayne is opposed. Mitch McCullough is opposed. Grace Heron is opposed. William Holford is opposed. Matthew Baudacelli is opposed. Andre Serna is in support. And Charles Huth is opposed. And Emily Huth is opposed. The other two folks that signed up a speaker card were the developers, Sarah and Sally. Do you guys have anything that you would like to add? Okay. All right. Council, that's all the folks who have signed up to speak. Do you have any questions for the developer or for staff? Any further questions? Councilmember Jackson?
I said I wasn't going to say anything else. But I guess, I'm going to make a motion, but I'm going to also speak and say just a couple of things. After sitting here and being a fifth-generation Bastropian myself, I know about old Bastrop. And I don't think anyone is trying to go against housing, because it is needed in our community, but not necessarily, but not, not even necessarily, but not at this location. And so you can imagine where I'm going with my vote on this. Affordable housing is something that we need, and there are several other places within the area where people can find homes and workforce housing, and that's important. When I listened to the proposal and talked about the amenities that are coming in and things like that, which is only going to bring in more traffic and more people, like the pickleball courts and the clubhouse and the fitness facilities, you know, friends and neighbors will be coming in to do that. I think it's going to have more traffic that will be developed there. Someone mentioned our motto, which I'm so proud of the fact that we put that together in historic preservation, saying, preservation of the past, progress for the future. I think that we need to preserve the past, and we can also have this progress, but not by taking away and destroying our historic neighborhoods. And so therefore, after saying all that and wanting to say more, I'm making a motion that we deny the resolution.
I have a motion to deny the ordinance, 2021-15, from Councilmember Jackson.
Mayor, I'd like to second that.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers.
I would also like to say something, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
And I totally get that we need the housing, but having a son that I just put through 18 years of those schools right there, and he spent the last four years in that PAC, and I don't know how many hours I sat in that parking lot, and the traffic right there, I swore to him when he turned 16, you're driving yourself, because I was tired of that traffic. And if he didn't drive himself, he was going to have to get on the school bus, because I'm not driving it no more after those years. So I really appreciate it, and I think you guys did a fabulous job with your drawing. And we do need it in the town, and I would do everything we can to see if we can find a place for it. It's just, you have to always remember in life, you have to think of the, there's always a right place for everything, and just this is not the right place for that. So I'm seconding Doc's motion.
All right. I have, thank you, Councilmember Rogers. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just wanted to, to say that I've spent a lot of time researching the entire project. I've spoken with the developers a couple of times. And I meant what I said, that they did a great job as far as listening to the public and adjusting their plan for what we've, what we've got. I'm, I'm personally 50/50 for the, for the project, but I have to vote, so I can't stay 50/50. I did make, too, I biked the property. I didn't mean to trespass on your property, but I did, there wasn't a fence, so I did go and bike from one end of it. So I've seen the entire property. I've talked, talked to a lot of neighbors that live there. And I, I came up with a list of pros and cons, and just the pros and cons were equal. They were, I had 12 for each. And so it even made it, made it harder to do this. What I can't get over, though, is the traffic. And knowing that there's a Dollar General store at, near, on Highway 95 and Farm Street, and then listening to the developers when they put that in, there's a traffic signal on Chestnut Street, there's a traffic signal on Cedar Street. And I do not think, based on my recollection of that, that the highway department was going to allow another traffic signal on Highway 95 to get people out of there.
Councilmember Crouch, there's not a light at Cedar. The light's at,
Oh, it's further, right?
It's at Hawthorne and Hoffman. I mean, just, just because there'll be some people saying, yes, there is, no, there not. So just, we all know that the light's a little farther down.
Yeah. Thank you for, for correcting me on that. But what I was getting at is, is when the Dollar General people came and they were doing their presentation for the signage for their building, they mentioned that there couldn't be a traffic light, from their perspective, on Farm Street, because it was too close to Chestnut Street. And if you started the traffic on Chestnut Street towards Farm Street, there wasn't enough room to stop and start. And so I don't think there will ever be a light at Farm Street. And I, I feel like the traffic is a, is a huge backlog there. Everybody's seen the pictures and just lived that now. And whether it's a P3 or a P4, you're going to have traffic added to that area. This, this could turn into a, you could put 20 buildings on that lot. And if it's a P4, if this group wasn't doing what they were planning to do and not have it as densely populated as it possibly could be. So without a traffic study, I can't, I can't support it until we know what we're going to do to the streets and how we're going to get those people out of there. And also, what it's going to do to the existing streets that we've got with redirecting of people and cutting through the thing. Is it a great project? Absolutely. Going to what the homeowner said, and really, everybody that's talked about this, it's exactly what our code wants. But it's exactly what our code wants in a P4 neighborhood. And, and it's, and it's not a P4 neighborhood. It's P3 right now. Did we get all the zoning accurate when we revamped our entire code and zoned the entire city several years ago? I think you, you said that there's a piece in the business park that's not zoned correctly, and you're, I agree with that, too. Is this zoned correctly? If you were starting from scratch and went from, what is P5 now on Highway 95, a commercial? You don't usually go commercial to residential. You usually have P5, P4, P3, so you have a buffer in between. This would have been a perfect project if you were This would have been a perfect project if you were starting from scratch and going from a P-five, P-five to a P-four to a P-three. But it, it's, it's not starting from scratch. It's starting from historic Bastrop. And so I, I think that the zoning isn't, that we maybe got that right on, on this one. If it was starting from scratch, I think you need that buffer of P-five, P-four, P-three to just designate those different areas. So since I can't stay at fifty percent and fifty percent, I, I'm with, I guess, I'm against the project unless there's a traffic study done that show, can show us where all these cars are going to go, whether it's a P-four or P-three area. And, and you're not going to have that much difference in traffic, but it gives us time to prepare for it. And the gentleman in the back that spoke and saying that this group has done everything they possibly could to get it, except that we're asking to be rezoned, and, and it's a P-four, and apparently a P, I mean, excuse me, a P-three, and it's P-three for a reason because we zoned it P-three to start off with. So I, I'm against for, for all that, for all those reasons. And I, I, I think that we've all done our homework on it, but I just wanted to let everybody know what the people I've talked to and the research that I've done on it, so that you don't think we're just flying off the cuff here and doing some voting like that. So thank you.
Councilmember Jackson, do you have further comments?
I just want to say it's a Family Dollar instead of Dollar General. But most, more importantly, it is a beautiful project. It's just at the wrong place, and I'd like to call for the question.
All right, counsel, we have a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Rogers to deny ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen. That means that if you vote yea, you are voting to deny the ordinance. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yea.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yea.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yea.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yea.
Okay, motion is unanimous, and the ordinance is denied. It is nine o'clock, and we're going to take a recess. All right, it's nine oh six, and we are going to move on to item twelve C. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas regarding the central, Bastrop Central Appraisal District election, voting for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Board of Directors, establishing a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Counsel, we are on page two hundred and thirty-nine of the packet. And Ms. Franklin, it is all yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This item you have before you is for the Bastrop Central Appraisal District election voting for the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three Board of Directors. The City of Bastrop is allowed two hundred and three votes. There are five candidates on the resolution. You can divide your votes by the five. You can give one person all of your votes. And each name that's on the list, if they get at least one vote, they're voted in. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. I'm happy for anyone to do whatever kind of math they would like to do and make a suggestion of how you would like to divide the two hundred and three votes that we have as a council. The folks that you, where you can divide your votes are listed on page two hundred and forty. That's Bill Archer, David Glass, Bill Hector, Ellen Owens, and David Reed.
I just was.
Councilmember Jackson?
I was looking at them, and I don't recognize, I mean, I recognize some of the names, but usually I try to support people that are in the city, since I'm representing the city. But I don't recognize any of those as city residents. Am I correct in that? I mean, not that it's going to make a difference now that we're voting on it, but that's just my thought process in the past. Does anyone know if any of them are city residents?
Their address, their home addresses weren't provided as part of the packet.
Okay, that's fine.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, being as there's five candidates, and there's five places on the board, I'm moving that we divided two hundred and three votes amongst all five of them as mathematically possible.
Is it okay if we make it forty, 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 and the rest to Mr. Reed at the bottom?
Yes.
All right, I second that.
I have a motion that we give forty votes to Bill Archer, forty to David Glass, forty to Bill Hector, forty to Ellen Owens, and the balance to David Reed. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion's passed unanimously. The resolution is approved. We're moving to item twelve D. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one fifteen of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for and establishing the procedures for a January twenty-ninth, twenty-one special election for Bastrop, Texas, and providing an effective date. Ms. Franklin?
Mayor and Counsel, this item before you were calling is to call a special election for place three on the council. This place, this election would be to fill an unexpired term of one year and six months due to a resignation. And pursuant to the provisions of Chapter forty-two for the Texas Election Code, the Commissioners Court approved the realignment of county election precincts to conform to the newly revised and adopted boundaries of the four county commissioners precincts. As a result of this, the city precinct numbers one zero zero two, one zero two two, and two zero zero nine are now one zero zero four, one zero zero five, and two zero one zero. And I'd be happy to take any questions. Oh, and I failed to say the date of the election. The election would be held on January twenty-ninth.
So counsel, this item just merely calls the election, and then the next item will be the contract. So, Councilmember Rogers?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, is now approved. Counsel, you know how I am, I'm jumping around. We are going to page four, item eleven H. It is off of the consent agenda because there's a gentleman that's been sitting here since five-thirty for a consent agenda item. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-four of the City Council of the City of Texas amending a contract for contract for grant administration and environmental services with Langford Community Management Services as it relates to the General Land Office Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program, contract number twenty-two dash oh eight five dash oh five nine dash D three one six, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously, and Mr. Meyer is very thankful for that. All right, we're going back to page five. We're on item twelve E. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-five of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a contract for election services between the elections administer of Bastrop County and the City of Bastrop for the January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one special election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for an effective date. Ms. Franklin?
Mayor and Counsel, this would allow us to enter into a contract, an agreement with the election administrator for Bastrop County to conduct our special election for January twenty-ninth. The cost of that election is approximately twenty-one thousand, ten dollars and ninety-four cents. And if we need a runoff election, that cost would be approximately twenty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars and ninety-four cents. You'll notice that there's a difference in the cost. The special election is just a little bit cheaper than the runoff election. The reason for the difference in that cost is the election, the early voting days. In the special election, we're having twelve early voting days because of a holiday. With the runoff election, we have thirteen days. So that is the reason for the difference in the cost.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Franklin?
So the total cost is forty thousand?
If we go into a runoff election, yes, sir.
Okay.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-five is approved. We're moving on to item twelve F. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve on first and second read ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, amending ordinance number twenty fifteen dash fourteen, Pecan Park Commercial Plan Development for sixty-six point four nine four acres of the land out of the Nancy Blakey survey, abstract number ninety-eight, located south of Highway seventy-one, east of Orchard Parkway, west of Hassler Boulevard, located within the City of Bastrop, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, and enforcement, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Ms. Land?
Good evening, everyone. All right, so this item is for Pecan Park Commercial. You know, we've been working through Platts for the Pecan Park residential section. And so just for clarity's sake, we are talking about the commercial section for this item. It is north of the residential section, where Sterling Drive and Agnes Street make the block towards Hassler Boulevard, where Orchard Parkway starts to come south, as you see on the map there. This plan development amendment is one of three items that are currently in process. We have this zoning amendment. We have the memorandum of understanding amendment, which will come to you at a future city council meeting. And we have a preliminary plat that's under review, and that will be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so the preliminary plat is adjusting for lot layouts and the realignment of Agnes Street. So this plan development amendment amends the original district that was created in two thousand and fifteen. It's about sixty-six acres of commercial development that allows for a mix of multifamily, office, and retail uses. There are two lots currently developed, South Side Barbecue and Ally ER. It is set up as five land use districts, office, general retail, commercial, multifamily, and common area. And none of those districts are allowed to exceed the percentages shown here. And so, as you can see, those add up to more than a hundred, but it allows a little bit of flexibility in how it builds out. The request, first request from the applicant is to increase the height allowance from two-story to four-story in the general retail land use district. As you can see there, that's no more than twenty-five percent of this area. General retail consists of retail neighborhood and regional shopping, hotels and restaurants. The B-three code comparison outside of the planned development district on this side of the river is five stories, and they are asking for four stories. So it's higher than what's allowed in the current planned development, but still lower than what's allowed outside of the planned development. For comparison, existing hotels in town vary from two to four stories in that area. Request two is to increase the max multifamily unit count from four hundred units to four hundred and eight units. And that is in the multifamily section. It allows low-rise, multiple dwelling unit buildings, up to twenty-five units per acre. As y'all saw in the last presentation, we don't have anything that's currently more than twenty-four units per acre. So comparable to, to what we have in town. And the increased unit count just allows them to adjust their buildings for the planned sale of a property to a multifamily developer. Allows them to balance their buildings a little better on the site. Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve by a vote of six, four, and one against. The applicant has requested that this be approved by the end of the year. We have attempted to accommodate that, and you do have the ability to do both the first and second reading and approve that in one meeting. And staff recommends approval.
Really good job. Ms. Land, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Ms. Land, I, I can't recall. I mean, they had a short discussion of planning and zoning. I can't remember what the one dissension or the one opposition. What was the reason for that opposition? Do you recall?
I don't believe they were very specific. I mean, I will say those various land uses here are not limited to a certain area of that overall sixty-six acres. And so if you look at the location map, there are a handful of lots on that southeast corner that are residential homes. So I'm not sure if there was a concern about four-story being near those homes or, or not. Kind of seemed to be where I thought they were going, but it wasn't clear.
That was my recollection, too.
Ms. Land, just east, that's, I believe that's the Hampton Inn. Is that, and how many stories is it?
Four.
Okay.
Which also abuts and look residential homes.
All right, counsel, any questions for Ms. Land?
Move to approve on the first.
I need to go ahead and have a public hearing. So I am officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up to speak for the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing, and I'm happy to entertain a motion, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson.
Can I ask a question real quick?
I need a motion and a second before we can go into discussion. But you, you can certainly ask a question to Ms. Land.
That's what I was going to do.
Mr. Councilmember Crouch?
Or just kind of a general question. So the new ladder truck that we got, what, what height does that reach for the fire department? Does that just go up to three stories? Or does it go higher than that, or do you know?
I am not sure. I do know that anything commercially built of that story would have to have adequate fire protection to all of the adopted City of Bastrop.
The suppression system per building code inside the building.
I was just curious on the trucks. I knew there was a reason we got it mainly for two-story house structures, I thought, but I just was curious as to that. So I know it's going to have fire protection sprinklers and all that in it.
We can certainly ask the city manager to provide that information to counsel. Councilmember Rogers? Okay, I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience. Sometimes it'll be you that takes up two hours, so I appreciate you guys being patient. All right, we're moving on to item twelve G. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, adopting the twenty twenty-two schedule of uniform submittal dates per Bastrop Building Block Code, Section two point three point oh oh four, annual adoption of schedule of uniform submittal dates for site plans and place type zoning changes, and Bastrop Building Block Technical Manual, Section one point two point oh oh two, uniform submittal dates, as shown in Exhibit A, establishing a repealing clause, providing for severability, and providing an effective date, and move to include on the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two consent agenda for second reading. Ms. Land?
Thank you. All right, so House Bill thirty-one sixty-seven in two thousand and nineteen since been codified into Local Government Code, Chapter two twelve, requires thirty-day approvals for site plans, Platts, construction plans, et cetera. And so in response to that, in order to manage workflow and assure that, ensure that we can adequately review and give proper due diligence to all of these plans that are incredibly detailed often, we want to have, we have set submittal deadlines once a month that give people the opportunity to have a predictable and timely response to their plans. So these schedules take into account notification requirements and have been adjusted for city holidays. And generally speaking, submittal day is Monday, unless Monday is a holiday, then it's a Tuesday. And you receive comments the following Thursday for a standard two-week turnaround time for comments. And so we have a schedule for Platts that go to the. the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval, for zoning concept schemes, because they have notification requirements, both in the paper and to neighboring property owners that we need to account for and build out a reasonable timeline for. We put neighborhood regulating plans on the same schedule, just because they are very similar in review. They look at a lot of the same information. And they could go to Planning and Zoning for approval. We have Platts that are administratively approved. So these are, you know, basic Platts that are approved at the staff level. And then we have site development plans and public improvement plans. And that is all.
Thank you, Ms. Land. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Land?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
You know, this seems such an honorous process, but to be clear, it's not because we're trying to be arbitrary, capricious. This is to comply with state law.
Yes.
And I, that's something that a lot of people don't understand, including myself to a certain extent, of why we have to have these concrete submittal dates and what, but it's to comply with state law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Land?
I move to approve.
Okay, I hold public hearing. Okay, so I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, is anyone signed up for the public hearing?
No, mayor.
I'm officially closing the public hearing. Councilmember Rogers?
But thank you for bringing that up about state law, because that's what I was gonna say. So I had to turn my light out. So I would move to approve, to stay in ordinance with the state law.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion, counsel? Councilmember Crouch?
No.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. It will be on the consent agenda at our next council meeting. We're moving on to item 12H, bottom of page five. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-122 of the City Council of Bastrop, Texas, approving two professional engineering service contracts with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated to the Agnes Street Extension Project to a not-to-exceed total combined amount of $500,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing effective date. Fabiola?
Thank you, mayor, council members. So in front of you tonight, I have for your consideration and approval, an item for two professional services contract for the Agnes Street Extension. So to provide you a little bit of background, in 2015, the BDC did a housing study that showed the Bastrop becoming a housing hotspot at that time. As we all know, there's been tremendous growth in population within the city. And unfortunately, with that, there's traffic increase, and we have some concerns on the level of service dropping, especially with increase in response from our first responders. And also, Highway 71 through Bastrop is designated for major hurricane and other flood-related evacuation route. Fortunately, recently, we received approval for a grant through CBG hazard mitigation in May of 2021, and we are moving forward with this project. As mentioned, this will require two professional services contract. And the reason for that is to facilitate financial reporting with the grant. And we are doing one contract that will cover part of the project that will be covered by the grant, and another piece will be covered, it would not be covered by the grant. So I start with the piece that's not gonna be covered by the grant, which is the water and the wastewater utilities. The piece that's gonna be covered by the grant is everything else, drainage streets, sidewalks, lighting, landscape. So this will promote growth to the area, quality of life, mobility. So here is a figure showing the limits of work. It's a connection between Humdip away, all the way going to the east, connecting to Agnes Street, Pecan Park. We selected Kim Lee Horn from our list of professional services that were selected in 2018, from when we published the request for qualifications at that time. And we have a representative with us here tonight for Kim Lee Horn, Ryan Del Monte. We have, from the grant, available funding a little bit over $4 million. The piece that's not gonna be covered by the grant, the water and wastewater utilities, we don't have much information at this time, because we have not finalized the scope, but that will be covered under the water and wastewater funds. And BDC will match 1% of the grant. The project schedule will have a meeting with, a kickoff meeting with the GLO tomorrow, where we'll learn more about the requirements within this project. And with that, we'll know exact, more or less, when we can proceed with the professional services with the engineering. The completion of this project, we have approximately three years to complete from the receipt of the grant. So with that, we request that you authorize the approval of these two professional services contract to a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Rogers?
If I understand that, so Agnes will be completed within three years. That's the part?
Yes.
Not just his part of the contract?
No, the design and construction.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understood that.
Good question.
So I can look forward to it.
Thank goodness we're not spending three years designing it.
I just wanna make sure, I never know.
Yeah. Councilmember Crouch?
You said it was gonna take three years to build after the grant was approved? Is that accurate?
That's an ask, we have three years as a requirement per the grant to finish the project.
Once they give you the grant, you have three years to finish it, or they take their money back. Yeah.
Okay. And did we get bids from other people, or did we just look to Kim Lee Horn?
This has been from a list of selected professional services that we did from when we did, published the request for qualifications back in 2018.
Okay.
So they're not bids?
Yeah.
Right?
Because you can't bid.
These are professional services, and we are prohibited from making these selections based on price. We make these selections based on qualifications.
Counsel, any other questions?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. The Agnes Street being completed has been a major road on our master transportation plan for a very long time, and it's nice to see definitive action funded and going to take place. All right, counsel, we're on the top of page six. Consider action to approve the second reading of resolution number R 2021-108 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the expenditure of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation funds for an infrastructure project in an amount not to exceed $1 million, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Ms. Young?
Good evening, mayor and counsel. This project, as you may recall, was presented to you in the November council meeting, and we were asked to come back with some detailed information, more detailed than we had provided. This project will allow access to the undeveloped portion of the industrial park. It is a critical connector to extend the infrastructure over the underground gas main. The project consists of extending Jackson Street to the south through both LCR power line and Enterprise Texas Pipeline easements. The road and infrastructure will turn toward the east, creating a new road, and that name is yet to be determined, total of approximately 1,200 linear feet of infrastructure. And in addition to the information that we've provided, we also are providing you with a timeline to review just as an update and for future reference of actions, next steps. Next slide, please. So our next, as staff, our next steps are, assuming or with the approval of councils or with councils' approval, would be to update the board on our revised information. And the board would then take action on the infrastructure project, approve a professional services agreement with an engineering firm, include project management as part of that PSA, and the board would then approve an agreement with construction company once the engineering firm receives bids and makes their recommendations. What you have in front of you is the original map, what we provided for you in your last meeting, and you had originally asked for us to come back with more than a red circled area and some details. So we did provide two more maps. This is what is in your packet, and that is.
Counsel, that's on page 327, if you're looking for it.
And the next slide, please, gives more detail, actually defining where the extension of the road is on Jackson Street down to where we would take the road to the east. It also includes the installation of infrastructure and the unnamed road to the east.
We don't have this map.
So this is on your, on the slide. And then there is one more map, which also includes, and I believe you can see it on the previous map as well, but shows you where the proposed ponds will be, detention ponds. And I believe with that information, we have answered all of the questions or that you had asked for us to provide in the previous council meeting. So do you have any other questions for us?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Young? And I really appreciate, page 327, it would have been nice for the other ones to be in the packet, but not required. But page 327 is certainly very helpful. Appreciate the additional data. And it does call out the 88-inch concrete roadways, and I believe they're all concrete roadways in the industrial parks, so that we're ready for not knowing what kind of traffic will be on those roads. And you are over in some clay. So it's, for folks that think that that million dollars for that piece of roadway, it's important to note that that's not hot mix. That is a concrete roadway. Any other questions for Ms. Young? Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
I appreciate the clarity. I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. 12J. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-123 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a professional service, professional engineering services contract with Kim Lee Horn for the Business and Industrial Park Improvements Project not to exceed amount of $300,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Fabiola?
Hey, so this is related to the project, the item that Janora just presented. This is a professional services contract for the parks and the business and industrial park improvements. There's a need for new and to expand new development within the business park. And the, this project will be, the whole area will be done in phases. This project includes the first phase of improvements, and the scope includes extension of the new road and utilities from the south of Jackson Street through the LCR electrical easement. It will serve the Moca Ventures track of east of the business and industrial park, and will include water, wastewater drainage, and roads. Janora actually had a way better figure than I have, but this phase of the project, the limits of work, is just the extension of South Street going east. I don't know if you can see that within that circle, that red square, that's the first phase of this project. We selected Kim Lee Horn from our professional services list, again, from the request for qualifications done in 2018. We have available funding $1 million available for design and construction, and we ask you to authorize this professional services contract in the amount of not to exceed $300,000 with Kim Lee Horn.
Move for approval?
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. I'm happy, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Crouch?
That was on the insurance page. It was showing the contract values and had 20, it had some different values as required versus what they had listed. Does that not apply to this? I know it wasn't checked, but just wanted to make sure that that's accurate or not accurate.
Councilmember Crouch, what page of the packet are you on?
I'm 161, if that applies to this one.
We're on page 334.
I don't understand the question. I don't remember that.
Yeah, let's see.
Okay, maybe it doesn't apply to this. I know it was for the Kim Lee Horn's insurance. So I just had that as a list. It also listed City of Sugar Land, but it wasn't checkmarked or Xed as what they needed. So I just wanted to make sure the insurance requirements were accurate.
I don't remember that.
Okay, he's.
Maybe, I think what it is, is they just used an old form and then Xed in what they needed for this. But that, that information was bolded, so I just wanted to make sure that we have the correct insurance for them.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I'm getting close. That's for item 11J. And we're on 12J.
Okay.
Okay, any other question, Councilmember Peterson? All right, I have a motion and a second. If there's no more questions, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The resolution 2021-123 is approved. We're on item 12K. Consider action to approve the first reading of resolution number R 2021-112 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving with Colson LLC in the amount of $233,934.62 for the project, providing an effective date, and move to include on the January 11, 2022 consent agenda for second reading. Ms. Young?
Thank you again, mayor and counsel. This project, Colson, is actually a food manufacturer from Austin. They are a division of Fiat Ortega. They are purchasing 5.477 acres at 414 Technology Drive at the cost of $233,935. Their development is a minimum of 20,000 square feet with an option to build an additional 10,000 square feet. Thank you. Their capital investment is a minimum of $1.6 million, and reimbursement of half of the purchase price will come upon the receipt of certificate of occupancy of the first 20,000 square feet, and the second half of the reimbursement is upon the completion of the additional 10,000 square feet. And the map indicates where the property is at 414 Technology.
Councilmember Crouch? Not Councilmember Crouch.
I did have a question, though.
Councilmember Crouch? I did call on you. You had the floor.
It was telepathy, I think. Is there some kind of a clause in there that I didn't see that prevents them from selling the land? I know that there was a certain amount of revenue they had to produce on it, but I think there was, on a previous project, there was an issue with them trying to sell the land after they got the building built or something. And I just wanna make sure that we've got that covered on this.
Yes, sir. All of the projects do include that. And basically, we structure it to where if the deal does not happen, that property gets reverted back to us. We are the main lien holder on that until the project is built.
Okay, awesome.
And in fact, we get the land back and we don't reimburse them some costs that we get to keep.
Yeah, okay. I thought I read all that, and just, I know there was some other incentives. We just wanted to make sure and ask a question. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Councilmember Crouch. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yeah, can y'all help me recollect? How many employees are they bringing in?
Twenty to thirty.
Twenty to thirty.
That's a good-sized group, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And awesome job bringing that in, by the way.
I think it was a group effort, but Jean. I think it was a group effort, but Jean did a wonderful job in leading the way on this.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we're moving to item 12L. Consider action to approve the first reading of Resolution Number R 2021-113 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a project with TA Bastrop LLC in the amount of $300,000 for the project, providing an effective date, and move to include on the January 11th, 2022 consent agenda for second reading. Ms. Young?
Thank you again, Mayor and Counsel. This project will purchase 6.7 acres at 4 Oaks, South Jackson Street at the cost of $300,000. They are an adhesives manufacturer and distributor from Canada. Their project will develop a minimum of 17,000 square feet. Their capital investment will be a minimum of $3 million, and the reimbursement of the purchase price upon receipt of certificate of occupancy. And we provided a map indicating the location of this project.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Young? Mayor Protem Nelson?
Same question. How many, how many jobs is this bringing in?
Between three and.
So this one's a little bit different in the sense of they already have five salespeople in the United States that will be office out of this location, but they will then add an additional five staff members to run the manufacturing portion of it. So it's a little bit different than a normal, because they're already established, but they'll be bringing five salespeople into the Bastrop market specifically, and then five, hiring five additional manufacturing staff as well.
Outstanding. This needs it, thank you.
And they, the minimum on there was 17, five, but they do look at potentially bringing their entire company here, so.
Thank you. Again, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, can, can we get the maps in the packet next time? This map and the one, most, the one before didn't, this, these maps weren't in the packet? At least I didn't find them unless they were.
Yeah, they're not in. All we've got's the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We apologize about that. We did drop them in there, so I don't know how they didn't end up in there. We apologize about that.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Counsel, we're going to skip 12O and go to 12P because I think Ms. Reiman Schneider might be interested in this one. Item 12P, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2021-128 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Austin Community College to offer consulting or training courses at 1302 Chestnut Street, Bastrop, Texas, attached as Exhibit A, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. City Manager, is it you or Mr. Joe?
I think I can do it. This is, this is a project that has been brought to us by the EDC. It's a workforce training initiative with ACC, and they're interested in using the property that is across the street here on Chestnut Street currently used by the farmers' market. Your packet includes a draft memorandum of understanding between the city and ACC that would call out the terms and conditions in some amount of detail. I'll point out that this is a one-year agreement. Trey and I met with representatives from ACC a week or so ago and, and walked the site, and we do think that what ACC has in mind for their training classes is, is compatible with the current farmers' market use. They are talking about welding classes and HVAC classes. For the most part, the welding classes will take place outdoors under that covered area there. They will want to spend some amount of time indoors through those large sliding doors there in the covered area into the facility that the farmers' market currently uses. They'll want to do that for some more traditional classroom kind of environment and when the weather is bad. But I'll also point out that they're not averse to training their students in bad weather because that are, that's the condition that these people would work in at some point. The HVAC training would take place for the most part indoors. Again, we, we walked the site. We looked at that indoor portion that they think would, would work for them. We have been in contact with farmers' market. We think that this works in accordance with our existing lease with farmers' market. It will mean that farmers' market will occasionally need to move stuff around to accommodate what ACC is planning to do. From our assessment, that, that is certainly reasonable. We, we do know, you saw in the weekly memo from me last Friday, that we've got different long-term plans for that property. We would love to attract a hotel to be there. Certainly, nothing's going to be built there in the next year, and so we think this is a good thing for us to do. As it was brought to us by Ms. Reiman Schneider, she explained that the space that has been allocated for training at, in the industrial park at the former Dig Tech Building doesn't accommodate the, the amount of space that ACC is looking for here, and so I will, I'll point out that the memorandum of understanding that's in your packet is, is a draft. There are some terms and definitions that we would like to tighten up just a little bit, but Counsel, if you're comfortable with what you just heard and will allow us to enter into a one-year membro, memorandum of understanding to allow that training to take place, we're, we're happy to, to do that. They're looking to start this just as soon as possible. They don't think it will be difficult at all to attract full classes. And Jean, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think they said they would have class sizes of about 15 students at a time, and, and they, they, they work closely with local industries to tailor their training, and they try to get these guys certified to a certain level of guys and gals, and, and there's jobs for them just as soon as they're done.
Jean, would you also speak to, I believe this is this, what you've worked with the Workforce Commission to help with some of the, so if you'd mentioned that as well.
I can kind of elaborate on a little bit of all of that. On the class sizes, yes, they're looking at 12 to 15 students per class. And then regarding the partnership with the Rural Workforce Solutions Team as well as ACC, and the EDC is putting together opportunities for scholarships, so those classes would become potentially, in a sense, free for a lot of the students. They would be able to apply and receive those scholarships on behalf of the Rural Workforce Solutions Team. So that is a great opportunity for this community, and we have been working very hard on this, and, you know, COVID kind of threw a little kink in it, but we all navigated, came together, and found a spot that, that I think we all feel is, is fitting for them to at least get it on the ground and get it rolling, and their goal is to start classes in January. They need about a 30-day timeframe to market the classes, to get the class, to get the students enrolled and, and ready to go and applying for the scholarships and that sort of thing, so.
And my recollection is what you negotiated was ACC was going to come down a little bit on the tuition, and the Workforce Commission is going to grant to cover that.
Yes, that was the original. Of course, you know, we're now about a year and a half different, so I think things have changed a little bit, but, but the scholarship opportunities are still there. The EDC also has some scholarship money set aside through our Workforce Education Budget item, so if we do need to fill gaps somewhere along the way to help more students attend, we can definitely step up and do so.
And is, are there still plans for the Dig Tech to be classrooms?
Yes, the Dig Tech Building is still planning on working with the Community Actions Team to supply workforce training programs there so they can actually expand their class, class offerings to do a little bit more than what they're doing right now. So we've been communicating with them. It's all timing, making sure everybody knows when, when things are going to take place. So I think we're about 30 days out on that as well.
So the agreement that we have with Mr. Howard was to be providing educational space not specific to the institution?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
That is such welcome news. I was, I reached a subject last night, and thank you for clarifying all of that. I am so glad that we have that partnership. I mean, years ago, I, I worked with the Rural Capital Area Private Industry Council. In fact, I managed the Bastrop office, and so we went through a lot of funding cuts, and so therefore, there wasn't a lot of training opportunities available, and then they reorganized as, you know, the Employment Resources or Solutions. And so I'm glad to see that's here, and I just applaud you for the hard work you put into it, Jean. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to move for approval.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2021-128 from Councilmember Jackson.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. I'd like to add my thanks to Jean and the whole team for the efforts with the Rural Workforce and with ACC, and it's long and sorely needed, and it'll be nice to see it happen. And City Manager, thank you for visiting with ACC, and the idea of approving it in principle from a policy standpoint, and letting you guys work out the details so that we can have January classes is exactly what I'm sure Counsel is wanting. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, just, I mean, I love the, the idea of, of trades training. Are we supplying this classroom at no cost, or did I? No cost, but they're, they're incurring all the expense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Let's have a round of applause for that. Yay. Finally, finally, finally. Nice to see it actually happen. All right, going back to the bottom of page six, item 12O. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas amending the budget for the fiscal year 2022 in accordance with existing statutory requirements appropriating the various amendments attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the January 11th, 2022 city council agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
All right. So as our Finance Management Policy states, budget adjustments wired on occasion, and the majority of the budget amendments that I'm presenting tonight are carryover issues just from '21 to '22. And then there's a few, like budget number one is just a correction by the Finance Director. We were working between two softwares this year.
It still hurts you to write that. We know that.
Yeah, I know. So, but no one's in the room, so it's okay. I'm on film, but that's fine. No, actually, so that's just fixing their travel and training, giving them back the money they should have had to begin with. Budget Amendment number two is also a carryover from an item, a server for the library that was ordered, it just didn't come in. So now we're appropriating it this year and making sure that that is covered. Budget Amendment number three, this has to do with the city manager's employment agreement and his changes that were made by this body just were not incorporated into fiscal '22 budget, so this is to get that included in there. This budget amendment is the same as the server. It's just we're paying for it out of the VERF fund. Number five is, let me see, that is a carryover. I'm going to switch my pages. That is also a carryover of the water line for West Bastrop Village. We did not have that appropriated. That contract came late in the game. Number six was, okay, so this is available fund balance that is left in this bond fund, and originally, this money was earmarked for the Old Iron Bridge. We didn't budget anything in the budget when we, when we brought it to you, but now we want to make sure these funds are appropriated and available in case we have any grant opportunities or anything comes along, so that is what this budget amendment is. Number seven is also a carryover. We had a late extension fee paid late in fiscal '21. None of that work was going to be done until '22, so we, we appropriated the revenue and the expenses in fiscal '22. This is debt service adjustment, and that's not right. That's what my words say, but that's not. This is grant. I just didn't change my slide, sorry. So we have several grants that have been approved since we brought the budget to you or late in the game, and those include the, we got a justice assistance grant for body worn cameras. This was originally denied, and then we were kind of on the pending list at that point, and they came back and said, yes, we'll give you $12,000.
And this is my favorite way ever to spell Agnes.
I know. LCRA community, y'all have heard about this grant. We're just appropriating that. Also, the Public Works Detention Pond, we actually requested a, a budget adjustment and additional funds. We had funds left over, and that was approved within the last couple of weeks, and so this will actually put a pump in that, no, pump, pump, I think it's a pump station, right?
Pump in the detention pond so they can pump it out.
Yeah, it's a pump station that we will be constructing, and then also just appropriating the amount that we think will actually be spent out of the GLO funds this year. And I believe, not last, is, this is also a carryover of available funds. We just want to make sure that all of the funds that are available in this revenue bond are appropriated. And I think I'm missing a few slides.
You skipped the fire department.
Oh, that's important, because there was no numbers associated with it. That's why I skipped it. Yes, so we are, we are, we've submitted a memo explaining the restructuring of staff, and the request for the budget amendment is to go from eight full-time FTEs to nine, and it's really just using that fire assistant, the assistant fire chief position, and creating an additional, two additional firefighters.
Counsel, the memo from Chief Rosales is on page 660 of your packet. And hats off to Chief Rosales. I thought he did a really good job of explaining what he was doing.
And I don't have the slide up here, but the last budget amendment is for the Economic Development Corporation, creating the million dollars less the amount that we already have appropriated in the 2013 bond fund. I'm not going to address any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Councilmember Rogers?
Just in the packet, the budget amendment numbers don't match your slides, just you need.
I have one missing.
It's because she skipped the fire department.
I did. I had one missing on my slides.
Well, also, there's a budget amendment 1111, but just so, I was just trying to keep track, but thank you.
That was supposed to be 11.
No, I was just giving you a number.
It's a good thing it's not 111.
Move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers. And a second from Councilmember Jackson. Once again, Ms. Waldron, it gets really complicated, and you've done a really good job of pulling it together, and the format that the budget amendments do make it a lot easier to go through this. So thank you very much for doing that. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, Counsel, we have the consent agenda. We need to read, Madam Secretary, unless, does anybody want anything pulled off the consent agenda? All righty. She is going to read 11A through 11J, but she's going to skip 11H because we've already approved that, and after the consent agenda, then we will be ready for adjournment. Madam Secretary, if you would please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the November, November 9th, 2021, regular meeting. 11B, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2021-120 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas. Resolution Number R-2021-120 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the 2022 council meeting schedule, attached as Exhibit A, and providing an effective date, item 11C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2021-114 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas rejecting all bids for the maintenance, mowing, and landscaping services, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing severability, and establishing an effective date, item 11D, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2021-110 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the General Land Office Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program, Contract Number 22-085-059-D316, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 11E, consider action to approve Resolution R-2021-109 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas adopting various policies and procedures required in conformity with the Civil Rights Act and the Fair Housing Act, as shown in Exhibit A, required under the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program Contract Number 22-085-059-D316 through the General Land Office, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, item 11F, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2021-118 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the federal grant procurement policy attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, item 11G, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2021-116 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas to ratify contract for liquid waste hauling and disposal to wastewater transport service not to exceed $75,900, as attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, item 11I, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2021-126 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas establishing a policy on the creation of municipal utility districts within the City of Bastrop extraterritorial jurisdiction and city limits, attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, item 11J, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2021-117 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a professional services contract with Corolo Engineers, Inc., to provide the services of construction management and inspection in the amount of $319,000, attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date, this concludes the consent agenda.
Would you mind reading those all again, I'm just kidding, I am happy to entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Crouch?
I have a question, did we already approve 11D? Just, just for clarification, I think we did 11D earlier.
No.
Oh, I had it checked off.
We did 11H.
Oh, well, I know that, I just had D, for some reason, I had 11D checked off as being done, but, okay.
Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
All right, Council, it is 10:08, Councilmember Peterson?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson, a second from Councilmember Rogers, it is 10:08, we are adjourned, everyone have a wonderful holiday season, a safe New Year, and we will see you next year, we are adjourned.